Good evening, welcome to the November 5, 2014, meeting of the Reno Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice Chair Weisske, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is roll call. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll? Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Kevin Weisske.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, number three, public comment. This item is for a public comment on an action item or for any general public comment. If you're here to comment on an action item, you will have an opportunity to do so as well when that item comes up. I have a few people who've already requested a comment under general public comment. First we have Blake Franzman. Thanks. Please state your name again for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Blake Christian Franzman. Came down to present a need for the men's homeless shelter. They have two washing machines that are broken and need of replacement. There is a repair order in, and the dryers aren't working either. So if you see our homeless looking really filthy, it's because there's no way of washing their clothes right now. Any help from planning to speed things along with the request would be appreciated for myself and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franzman. Thanks for your comment. Next, Nikki Boyce.
Hi, my name is Nikki. This is my first time ever speaking in this kind of situation. I have to admit, I'm a little bit intimidated, but I'm here basically because I'm really considering the future of food and our community here in Reno. I came here as an Alaskan transplant, came to Reno to manage an urban farm. We had a small community agriculture program. We fed around 20 families year-round and taught around 12 interns. Even after that ended, I stayed here because I really cared about Reno, this community. I cared about the people, and I saw a lot of potential here in the city. In the time that I've spent growing food here in the high desert, I've learned a lot about the advantages that we have with our year-round sun and the heat and the potential, just with all the community support and the wonderful people like this that come out. And then a lot of our constraints. One of the foremost constraints being our water supply. As you all know, it's been in the news a lot nationwide and here in Reno. We're getting really worried about it. Farmers are getting water turned off earlier than ever. Our average rainfall here in Reno is about nine inches a year. Sorry, I should say in Nevada. Here in Reno, it's 7.5 inches. In light of this, and the city of Reno redoing the master plan here in the upcoming new year, I would just, I'm here to ask you all to consider what we can do in the region to think about water and our food security. A great example that I found in doing some research was the city of Tucson, who really promote harvesting rainwater and the reuse of gray water in their cities, especially in residential areas. And even in looking at the agenda and looking at the developments that are going on in here, even in your homes, looking at how we as a city can help promote those kind of programs, they do some really great rebate programs. They have a ton of information online, and I brought some examples if anyone from the council is interested. But basically, approximately 50% of our average residential use of water in the home here in Reno could be funneled out into irrigating our plants. About 50% of the water is used in the home, and 50% is used in irrigating just our landscapes. If we think about the impact that could have over an entire city, that's pretty powerful. This is just one very, very small example of a measure and a step that I think the city of Reno could help to take, and even in just promotion of something like this in the future. As a person here who thinks about the future of my family and the future of living here for the next 50, 100 years, I'd really appreciate just any of that forethought. Yeah.
Thanks, Ms. Boyce. Thank you for your comment. If you do have specific examples or things you want to share with the Planning Commission, you can give it to Michelle or get an email address, and you can submit it to us through staff.
Thanks, Ms. Stapleton.
Thank you. Cynthia Ferris?
Hi, thanks for this opportunity. I've been a little concerned about this problem in my neighborhood. I went to the Keystone Corridor meetings, but I live on the northeast corner of Severn and Gulling, where it dead ends. And we were just outside the Keystone Corridor. We were impacted with traffic from the closure of the left-hand turn at the top of Keystone. Our neighborhood now funnels people up to McCarran. Since this addresses the building on Gulling, we're adding more traffic. That intersection, I'm kind of the neighborhood watch. People disregard stop signs. They speed incredibly up and down there. We have the gully right behind us. Gulling spills out, and a lot of people utilize that. There's not even a crosswalk for those folks. And so, I'm not opposed to building there, but I was wondering if the city has done any traffic impact for that one corner, because it's extremely dangerous. And now we're getting a lot more traffic and adding more people and more houses is going to impact it further. Ideally, I would love to see a traffic circle. It's because we've got a dead end and just a three-way thruway. So I would, you know, I'm hoping to get some answers or consideration about the city looking into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. And another great way, in addition to coming to meetings or contacting your councilperson, is to call Reno Direct anytime that you see traffic issues and want to report those, and perhaps open up a case for them to look at that. And the number is 334-INFO, 334-2099.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rob Fitzgerald?
Rob Fitzgerald, I'm here to speak on LDC 15-00016, the material processing plant. And I think it's a use that could be of some value to that part of Reno, having aggregates handy instead of trucking them all across town to get there. I think with the proper mitigation measures, it's always been used for that. I think it'd be a nice idea. I wouldn't mind seeing it there. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you for your comment. Kevin Weisske?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I know it's a little bit unusual for Planning Commissioner to also add to public comment, but for many of you out there tonight that aren't aware, our vice, our vice chair, our chairman, chairwoman, Dagny Stapleton, has put in her letter of resignation this last month. She will be stepping down from the Planning Commission. And it kind of touches me, because Dagny and I started working together well over a decade ago back at the NAB level. Dagny was with Ward III, and I was with Ward II NABS at the time. And we've just kind of progressed and come along together and made it to the Planning Commission. And I've enjoyed the travels. I really have. And last year, when I nominated you for chair, I did it with full confidence, and you've been a great chair. And due to your personal obligations that come first before Planning Commission, I understand. But like I told you a couple of days ago, I'd kind of hoped when I didn't hear anything over the last few days that maybe you had changed your mind and you were going to stay on and finish your term. But on behalf of your fellow Planning Commissioners and Planning Staff, I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation from the Reno City Planning Commission. Thank you for your time, Dagny.
Well, I'll add a public comment. Thank you so much. I didn't expect that, and that's really great. Thanks a lot, you guys. It's been a pleasure to be chair. I appreciate the honor of being chair. And it's also been great to work with you, Commissioner Weisske, over the years. And you've really been a great support on Planning Commission. I appreciate it a lot, and I've really enjoyed working with you, as I have with all you guys. And I think that this is a really good Planning Commission, and we work well together, and I really appreciate that. So I think we do a good service to the city. And I wanted also to thank staff for all of their effort, and especially the lovely staff reports that are in tonight's packet. I think we all noticed that there are some really great-looking page numbers and like section numbers. And I know it's my last meeting, so thanks. Thanks, yeah, my last meeting. Really awesome, beautiful. Thank you. Okay, so I'll close public comment unless there's anyone else in the audience, members of the public who would like to speak at this time. If you do come up.
I turned in my card.
Okay, is it, if you turned in a card specifically to speak on the Palisades item, then we will call you up during that item if you indicated that you were speaking specifically on that item.
Thank you.
So if, okay, if there's any other general public comment at this time? Okay. Next item on the agenda is, I'll close public comment. Next item on the agenda is number four, approval of the minutes. Do we approve, they're both from September 17, 2014, one for the workshop, one for the regular meeting. Can we approve those together in one motion? If you can do it separately, please. Okay, so I would take a motion if there's no comments or changes. Take a motion to approve the September 17 workshop minutes?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Weisske, I move to approve the September 17, 2014 Planning Commission Workshop Minutes.
Commissioner Reno, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need to abstain.
Any abstentions?
Commissioner Kaufman, I abstain.
Okay, two abstentions, five votes in favor, motion passes. I'll take a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes for that date.
Commissioner Reno, I'll make that motion to approve September 17, 2014 Regular Planning Commission Minutes.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Woosley, I'll second that.
Okay, do I have any abstentions before we take a vote?
Commissioner Kaufman, I abstain.
Commissioner Taylor, abstain.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, item five, City Council Liaison Reports.
I have none.
Okay, thanks. We will go on to item number six, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard on a specific item will need to so indicate on a request to speak form that you can get here from the secretary. And what we're going to do under this agenda item is move up, move item number 6.3 up and hear that at the beginning. First on this item, I'll take disclosures before we hear from staff. Any disclosures on this item?
Yes, I have a disclosure. Number one, I live in that area, but I conferred with council, and it doesn't influence by vote one way or the other.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site. It's such a big site, but I visited a portion of it, and I also received emails.
Commissioner Levis also visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Stapleton, I did as well.
Commissioner Weisske, as did I, and also spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Woosley?
I visited the site and received emails.
Okay, thanks for that. Staff, or Vern, thanks.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for tentative map to develop a 260-lot single-family residential subdivision with special use permits for grading disturbance within a major drainage way, hillside development, grading resulting in cuts of 20 feet or more and fills of 10 feet or more, and clustered development. The site contains just under 190 acres and is located east of the Demone Ranch High School. We have received a request from the applicant to continue the, this project to either the December 4 or December 11 Planning Commission meeting, and I believe they're here to further explain their reasons for the continuance request.
Okay, great. Do we have an applicant's representative here? Ms. Lindell?
Good evening. For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. And we submitted a letter today asking for a continuance of this item in order to give us time to work with the property owner to the east, Mr. Brad Stanley. He contacted us, and we've been back and forth, and we have a few little issues that we're trying to work out with him. So we're requesting it to be continued.
Okay, thank you. Vern, do you have anything to add? Okay, so I guess we will, I would accept a motion on that, but I've got to do public comment on this item first. In case we, even if we continue, even if we decide to continue, we still have to take public comment. And it looks like there's a lot of folks here for this item, so you still have this opportunity to voice your opinion on this project, even if we do decide to continue it. I have a stack of comments here. I'll start with Brad Stanley. And if you, if you don't, I'll call, I'll go through all of these that I received. If you don't wish to speak, you don't have to, but you of course have this opportunity, and welcome to take advantage.
Hello, Brad Stanley, as mentioned earlier, and I'm the property owner, or we're the property owners, to the east. There are, as Melissa said, some easement issues, some entitlement issues, a host of environmental and wildlife issues that you're going to hear about from others, I'm sure. I brought this prop or visual aid along here. It's kind of a bucket full of binders.
Can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Yes, I said I brought all these binders along as a kind of a visual aid, a prop to show the background of this project and its predecessor. And all those binders contain contracts with the previous owners and with some of the previous developers. And I was a party to some of those agreements. It also shows, also contains agreements with the Washoe County School District, and I'm not sure what the disposition is on all those. And I know that, in talking to some others, there's some question about those. So there's some unsettled issues. I think the primary one, though, just Stanley, property owner to the east, there are access issues and an easement issue since my easement or our easement is being redirected and adjusted. That said, as concerns, general concerns, as Melissa pointed out, we've been working for the last three days. We flew up a planner from Rancho Cugamunga, who worked on the previous iteration of this, and spent two days actually working on it. We also have a problem, and Vern, we discussed it with him, Planner Close, we were out of the country, and when we returned, we got a irate phone call saying, "So what is going on with this project?" And we said, "What project?", because we hadn't received a notice. And in fact, we have two parcels, and we were told that two notices were sent out, but we never have, to this date, received them. The reason it's particularly odd is because our mail was held, and so we went through it in great detail, you know, looking for checks. And so, we were pretty intense about our scrutiny of the mail, but no, no notice. The other, the other point that I would mention is, again, in working with the developers, we found in reading the 204-page document that I think the planning group got, and then your 100-plus-page precess of that, that our name, Stanley, is mentioned somewhere between a dozen and 20 times in the document about our involvement in the previous project, about our easement, about our planning of the easement, about our involvement in the east. And yet, even though the thing came, actually was actually filed in September, we were not notified, contacted in any way. We found that peculiar. And talking to the county, we're county folks, just right on the border, sphere of influence for part of our, for part of our property, and talking to Bill Whitney of county, he said he just learned of the project on the 30th and had no particular interface with it. So there was no way for us to know about it. And with this kind of material that we need to go through, we absolutely agree and ask you to continue the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Susan Noble?
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, I'm Henry Bills. I live at 2985 Tobiano Drive, which is near Demone Ranch High School. Love living in South Reno, surrounded by foothills and beautiful scenery. If I had my first choice, I'd prefer this development wasn't built, but I understand, and I knew when I bought my house, that that area was zoned for residential, and I'm sure all of you will make sure that it fits in with the rest of the neighborhoods, and it's a beautiful development. I'm sure everything's going to be up to snuff. My concern is that please leave access to open space. You know, people in Nevada, we like to walk our dogs and jog and ride our mountain bikes and like to up and see the horses. So there are good access to open space right now, Trail Rider Drive and McCauley Ranch. So as you build up the hill, just please leave access to open space. We don't want to get in disputes with people over, you know, cutting across their private property or anything like that. Just, just leave a trailhead, leave a gate, leave access to open space. That's, that's all I ask. Please. Okay? And that way, not only could the people who live there enjoy it, but other people in the neighborhood, other people in South Reno can, can go up there and enjoy it and tastefully enjoy it. Not, not disrupt anything, but go up there, walk their dogs, jog, ride their mountain bikes, whatever. So just please leave access to open space. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bills. Henry Kimball?
Hi, Henry Kimball. I live in Sparks. I'm a retired program manager and quality consultant. I had the privilege of working for the Hewlett-Packard Company when Mr. Packard and Mr. Hewlett were alive. And it sounds like a digression, but I think it ties into this particular situation, because our company, at the time that I worked for them, was frequently rated as one of the 50 best companies to work for and one of the 50 most admired companies. And a large part of that, I think, came from the goodwill that was engendered through the corporate citizenship that Hewlett-Packard showed for a variety of issues. I'm here to suggest that there's some goodwill to be engendered by the developer by making this community a horse, wild horse and burrow safe community. We already have issues with wild horses and burrows, but what I'm suggesting is that the planning ought to include provisions to make sure that not only are the animals protected in their traditional migration grounds, but also that people and property are protected. So there's some planning that needs to go on in that regard, I think. The second thing I would like to toss out, and it may seem like a little bit of a digression, is the word feral. If you are familiar with wild horse and burrow issues, you've probably heard that word, and I would suggest you might want to set that aside in your own mind. That item is in the literature in Nevada based on an agenda rather than on science. Mitochondrial DNA studies, as well as fossil records, show that horses are an indigenous species and have been here long before Europeans came to North America. So the tie-in here is that these animals have a right to these traditional lands, or at least a right to be respected on them. And I think we have an opportunity to do that, if we do it in the upfront planning stages. And I guess the goodwill that I see as potentially being engendered by the developer in this case is that we have hundreds of people in Washoe County who are very interested in these animals. We have thousands of people statewide who are, and hundreds of thousands of people throughout the world that are aware of Virginia Range horses and what's going on with them now. So I think the upfront planning to ensure that their rights are respected, their migratory pathways are respected, and that you build in a way that protects people and property and protects the safety of the animals, very important in Reno right now, so we don't get into more issues like we've seen in the last few years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Thanks. Next item on the agenda, oh, sorry, public comment from Cindy Cherrigan.
Could you speak into? I'm sorry. You have a copy of the letter I'm going to read? My name is Cindy, sorry. My name is Cindy Cherrigan. I am a Realtor with Chase International located in Demone Ranch. I'm a former wild horse commissioner for the state of Nevada under Governor Gwynn and a resident of Reno for over 37 years. I am here tonight, like the last gentleman, express a real concern with the future of the Palisades residential development located in Demone Ranch. The concern is about horses, feral astray horses. This area has been a natural feeding ground for now approximately 100 horses. The horses will not leave the area, and the horse population will continue to grow. Wild astray horses in neighborhoods don't mix. It creates a huge public safety issue, city-state liability issues, as well as the safety of some would say, living symbols of the historic and pioneer spirit of the West. I have listened to Demone Ranch homeowners, and they say they love to see the horses in their neighborhoods, or they don't mind horses until their property is damaged. They almost, or do hit a horse, with or without their children, in the car, and they see horses running when the children are playing, and then they complain to the Nevada Department of Agriculture, where in turn, with complaints, they have to take the horses away. This is where it becomes a state and/or city liability. I am sure you're aware of people and horses who have been injured or killed in neighborhoods. There was a fire truck in Demone Ranch going out on an emergency call that hit and killed a horse. There is a simple solution to address these problematic issues before they escalate further with new congested neighborhood and help protect not only the public and the horse safety, as well as limiting more safety and city liabilities. The solution, the developer should install a legal fence around the perimeter of the development and install cattle guards to keep horses out of the neighborhood. This has been a very efficient and proven solution from the Hidden Valley neighborhood. Please know, this recommendation and solution is endorsed and backed by the state of Nevada Department of Agriculture, under the State Director of Jim Barbie. The council will be receiving a letter from the Department of Agriculture requesting the developer to install legal fencing and cattle guards. And I'm sure this letter will be more detailed for their reasons. Let us appreciate the horses out on the range and not in the neighborhoods. If you have any questions, I left you my contact numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Cherrigan.
Thank you.
Shannon Windle?
Madam Chairman, would you please inform the audience that we don't allow clapping?
Unless you're going to clap for us. You guys can't clap for any of the comments. So just to keep an orderly, thank you, okay. Just to keep an orderly meeting, please hold your comments for public comment, and if you want to, you know, express, you know, thoughts to others, please do it outside in the foyer. Thanks. Yes, Ms. Windle?
Thank you. My name is Shannon Windle. I'm the president of Hidden Valley Wild Horse Protection Fund, and have been a Protection Fund and have been a member of that organization since 2010. I became involved with wild horses of the Virginia range after moving to Demone Ranch and seeing these beautiful, gentle creatures in our streets and asking, is this safe for them and for us? During the winter season of 2009 through 10, our organization documented 18 horse vehicle strikes, all in the Demone Ranch area, all resulting in the death of the horse, either because of the strike or after the fact through euthanasia. These strikes happened because no provisions were made during the planning commission, or by the planning commission to require the developers of the Demone Ranch community put up barriers to keep the horses on the range land where they are safe. Instead, the developers in the Demone Ranch and Curdy communities have, until now, been given leeway to omit any type of fencing or barriers that would prevent the horses from entering our congested streets. By taking no measures to prevent the horses from walking down our busy, congested, dark, 45 mile an hour streets, the developers are in effect promoting public safety issues. Working with the developers over the last four years, volunteers have been able to completely fence out the Demone Ranch community. The horse vehicle strike rate has dropped to less than three per year. But this has taken time and effort, and horses have been killed while others have been removed forever from the range because no one asked that the, for barriers that would keep the horses safe when the Demone Ranch master plan was approved. I am here tonight to request of the City of Reno Planning Commission that the development plan for the Palisades Development include the requirements to erect barriers that would prevent the wild horse population of the Virginia range from accessing said property being developed and estimated to be 189.5 acres in size, using devices such as fencing materials and modified cattle guards, as stipulated in NRS 569.431 through 471, along the perimeter of the property prior to breaking any ground and prior to any removal of any and all existing barriers, such as fences and modified cattle guards currently in use to prevent the horses from entering the congested streets. This request is practical, reasonable, realistic, achievable, and sensible. It promotes public safety and will be embraced by the existing residents of the area. On behalf of the horses, I thank you for the time and for consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Windle. Carol Cook, and then following that, Ms. Farley. And I just want to ask everybody, I've got a whole stack of public comments here. We want to give everybody a chance to speak, but if you are repeating what the last person said, please try to limit your comments, and if you can, you know, add what you think is important, but we've got a whole stack and a long meeting. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening to the commissioners and best wishes to you, Ms. Stapleton. My name is Carol Cook. I'm a native Nevadan and a native of this area. I've read the proposed staff report, and the proposed development poses serious concerns about public access to public lands. The proposed development is all fenced, and it fences off longstanding and much beloved hiking trails that have been in use for generations. This is a grave problem, especially here in Reno, where we are trying to expand our economic base and encourage tourism. This is a wonderful asset to our community. I'm quite aware that there is a patchwork of private land around this development and throughout the Virginia range, but I am very concerned that the Virginia range is increasingly being locked up and the public locked out of access. I have two questions for staff and maybe the commission members themselves. Where are the state and federal lands located within the Virginia range area? Can this be answered without having citizens to go down and look at every single parcel at the recorder's office? The second concern is, what efforts are being made by local, state, and federal governments to preserve historical access and work with property owners to take advantage of this? I think this is the time to plan ahead and make sure that we have access to the land that belongs to all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Teri Farley? Thanks, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name's Teri Farley, and I have spent about 15 years studying and writing about Nevada's wild horses. And I have books that are published in, over 2 million books published in 27 countries, and I only bring that up for two reasons. One is, our tourism base could really benefit from the preservation of the wild horses. People all over the world are just ecstatic about coming to Nevada to see those horses. Second is, there's a reason that a one-ton horse will take orders from a 10-year-old girl. That's because horses don't want to fight with us. And I propose that we put up the fences, as others have said, so that we don't put them in a situation where there is a battle. One of the really good models for wild horse neighborhood interface is in the valley surrounding the Rhodes Road area. The people in that area have, were notified of the fence outlaw and of the habits of the resident herd before they moved in. They've continued to educate themselves and each other about the horses. They even keep track of the horses, like which mare had which baby and where is she and things like that, not just as a hobby, but then they know if there is a nuisance horse, I might put that in quotes, if there's a horse that people have problems with, they know which horse it is. So there's not this wholesale roundup of horses who are living in harmony with the neighbors. Last, I would say that the idea of looking at this problem, finding the solution, which is right in front of us, before the builders are in there, is the only way to do this. There are no innocent bystanders at this point. We know what the problems can be, and we, you have a lot of grassroots people who are educated about this problem, who are offering all of their expertise for free, and I think it'll keep everyone a lot safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farley. Tina Broderick, following that, Patrick Coletti. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tina Broderick. I'm a resident of Sparks, Nevada. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight in regard to the proposed development side of Palisades Development. As a citizen living in the region, I respectfully request that major consideration is in sustainable development be given to the free-roaming Virginia range horses that occupy the land. Many homeowners in the region love to go out and see these horses, and it's no secret that the region has an estimated 1,200 wild horses. In addition, tourists visiting the areas also love to see the horses. I've had the privilege to meet people from Germany, France, Israel, Shanghai, China, as well as domestic citizens from Massachusetts to Florida and California. They all have a common quest. It's a chance to see the wild horses free-roaming in wild, in family vans, excuse me. After reviewing the proposed maps, I did not see any documents allowing access for wild horses. I did notice open space or public space. However, the houses are so close together, there is no access for these animals to pass through the open space. An easement or easements would allow the animals access to reach these open areas. Ideally, there could be a few less houses constructed in three or four of these areas, and the houses that join the easements could be sold at a premium, much like owners pay when they live next to a golf course. Additionally, animal crossings such as underpasses, tunnels, and overpasses would allow for sustainable development. Throughout the U.S. and around the world, many other species have benefited from mankind's adaptation to migratory paths. I sincerely hope that the developer and the city work together to accommodate the wild horses. Many view the horses as a problem. They cause traffic accidents and routinely cross the line from public and state to private lands. Yet, many local residents and visitors believe that the horses grace the landscape. A problem is an opportunity turned inside out. The region has an opportunity to accommodate this conflict and generate goodwill among locals and, at the same time, attract vital tourism. Former mayor Robert Gachelle signed a proclamation on April 2014 stating the importance of the wild horses for tourism in the region. He states, "Whereas wild horses and burrows are natural resources and cultural assets, and have a potential to promote tourism and job creation in the state." This is Bob Gachelle's signature on this proclamation. "As stewards of the land, we have the responsibility to strive for sustainable development and to utilize our resources in a respectful manner." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broderick. Before we go on to the next comment, I just want to explain to everyone again, on this item, we moved it up because there were so many of the public here, but also because the applicant has asked for a continuance. So what that means is likely the commission will vote to continue this to another meeting. So I just want to ask everybody at this point if there are additional comments, if you could please limit them or perhaps even forego them to the next meeting. We will hear this item all over again with a full hearing, likely at a meeting in the future, and we can set a date for that. So I want to ask if there's any other comments, if folks would be willing to hold off and wait till that meeting. Of course, if you would like, you still, you know, have that right to do that, but we've got a long night ahead of us, and there will be another opportunity. So with that, I've got comments from Mr. Coletti.
I'll forego.
Thank you. Ms. Rick? Thank you. Ms. Fong?
Hi, my name is Donna Fong, and I'm a resident of the Virginia City Highlands, where we have a lot of interaction with the wild horses. So I come to speak for them tonight and hope that as you go through the planning of this yet another development, which I have to say, in my opinion, I left California because of urban sprawl and just the havoc that comes with too many homes. And I see what's happening to the hills of Reno. I've been here four years now, and the amount of development that's being done is astonishing to me. It's an ugly cancer on the land, in my opinion, but I understand people need places to live. So I just would ask that you please take these horses into consideration and remember that without horses, we would not exist as we are today, as this country, as this state. They are the reason that we exist, and I think we owe them at least a decent place to live and take them into consideration when you're building these homes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fong. I'll read the rest of the names I have cards for. Please indicate if you'd be willing to forego your comment to the next meeting. Ms. LaBelle Flatley?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Deere? Ruth Deere?
Hi, my name is Ruth Deere. I'm a wild horse advocate and wildlife advocate, too. I would like to see them not really build these homes. I think it's not good for the horses and the wildlife in the area. I would like to say some concessions that I would like the builder to consider fencing. I would like the builder to donate some of the land to the horses behind the houses, so they always have a place there to live. And I would also like to see what's called a seeding program, where they could put grasses, native grasses, out behind the houses to keep the horses from going into the neighborhoods to get the grass on the lawn. And I would also like to see us work with the Department of Agriculture about having a well put in with a windmill that would make power to pump the water up for the horses. I would like to see an area where people could go up and visit with the horses safely, and this would benefit humans and the horses. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Martin? Thank you. Craig Downer?
My name is Craig Downer. I'm a wildlife ecologist. I've written a book. You could call me a wild horse ecologist, too, or expert on the order Paracydactyl, which includes the tapirs and horse and rhinos. And all these animals' true vigor is preserved in the wild, and like to remind you, there's a very strong mutualistic symbiosis between man, mankind or humanity, and horse kind, as well as burrow kind, as there are with other animals, too. I think it's a very special relationship. And I think that we treat them just as mere numbers or ciphers at our own, to our own, at a great risk. And I think this is a wonderful example, or opportunity, rather, to learn how to share the land and freedom with such magnificent animals who have done so much for our kind, and it shouldn't be all about, just about mankind on this planet Earth. And I was on Mustang Matters earlier today, and I came up from Mindeniria, and I was born in Reno, so I'm a fourth-generation Nevadan, and I count ranchers and miners, civil engineer, teachers, a great variety of people that have been here in the West. But I happened to take the course of the naturalist or nature lover, so I became an ecologist, and I did get a master's degree here at University of Nevada Reno. I've written two books on the wild horses, and I would commend Teri Farley for her work and scholarship, too. So I just encourage people to delve into the importance of the horse in our world. I think they're natural healers, both of people and of ecosystems. And please bear in mind that they're wonderful fire preventers, and this has to do with their not being ruminants. Practically all the other big grazers in North America are ruminant grazers. They have a different digestive system that more thoroughly decomposes what they eat. Consequently, their feces don't contribute as much as the post gastric or sequeal digesters, which are the horses and burrows and those other animals I mentioned. There are a number of those that have been evolved separately. But these animals greatly contribute to the humus content, and they more greatly also disperse seeds from a greater variety of plants. So these actually can benefit an ecosystem and prevent catastrophic fires. And if you want to check out my book, it's called The Wild Horse Conspiracy, go online. It's an ebook and other books, a lot of books that test to this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Downer. Ms. Orchard? Thank you. Ms. Stanley?
Hi, I'm Sharon Stanley. My husband started this all, Brad Stanley, and I sympathize with you because when I was on the board adjustments, I know how long it takes to get people through this process. However, this will answer one of the questions, I believe, that was asked earlier, having to do with open space. We've been in that property for 20 years, and unless something has changed in that time, all 40-acre parcels are county, up to the story county line, they are all privately owned. Yes, it looks like open space. Everybody thinks it is. It isn't. The D is on our property. For the students to come up and work on that, they actually sign waivers to come on the property. And so the, we knew development was coming. The development when we moved in was not there. The development when we moved in was not there. 11 years ago, it started. They've done a beautiful job of maintaining, putting in trees, flowers, lots of parks. I'm sure this development will do something like that, but it isn't open space, although people think it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stanley. And Mary Ann Osnor?
My name is Mary Ann Osnor, and I just want to say that this development of homes that they plan to build in this grazing area of our historic Virginia Range horses, and I say "our" horses, but actually, these horses belong to everyone in the United States. They are the oldest herds in the United States. This is their area, and make sure that people know this is a horse area. No complaining and no fences will keep them out. They will find a way. Wildlife is important, and we have coyotes, too. And so, the little dogs and cats are not safe out there. If you, if the people don't like this, they should live in town. And make sure that you, the developers, advertise this as a horse-friendly community. Expect manure in the streets and be happy.
Thank you, Ms. Osnor. Okay, so in anticipation of a motion on this item, that's all the public comment we have this evening on this item, do we want to talk about a date certain for this? Claudia or Vern? Do you want to suggest December 4th?
The applicant. Claudia Hanson, the applicant requested December 4th or 11th. We know for sure we'll have a December 4th meeting. We're not sure on the 11th yet, so I would recommend December 4th for a date certain.
Okay, so I would take a, unless there's any discussion, I would take a motion including that date.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vice Chair Wieski, I'll make a motion to postpone, continue this agenda item to our December 4th, 2014 meeting.
Hey, do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, and I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. We will do this all again, you guys will, on December 4th. Sorry. Next item on the agenda is item 6.1, case number LDC 15-00017, Gulling Heights. Before we, I guess as staff is coming forward to kick off this item, let's do disclosures. Anyone have disclosures?
Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site, received communication from the applicant's representative, and received emails.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and received emails.
Commissioner Stapleton, as did I.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Wisely, visited the site, received emails and communications with the applicant representative.
Okay, thanks. Vern, is this you? Thank you.
Vern Close, Senior Planner. This is a request for a tentative map to develop a six-lot, single-family residential subdivision and a special use permit to allow the lots to utilize small lot development standards. It's a one-acre site located on Gulling Road. Staff is recommending approval because we believe all the findings can be made. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Mr. Kropotic?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, John Kropotic, here on behalf of the applicant. Certainly, we agree with all the conditions. It's written a pretty straightforward staff report. I do appreciate the level of analysis somebody commented on, and all the pagination of the staff report as well. I thought it was well done. You know, very straightforward on the small lot part. It was no intensification. It's six acres, six dwellings to the acre. The zoning allows 7.26. So if you wanted me to get into that, I would be glad to in more detail. I have a bunch of exhibits as well. And otherwise, I'd just be here for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Vern, do you have anything to add? Or, all right, I would ask, commissioners, do we want a little bit more detail on this? Mr. Kropotic said he had some exhibits. Does anyone want more for presentation before I take public comment on this item? Being none? Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay. Since there's no public comment, commissioners, questions or discussion on this?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno, Mr. Kropotic, can you explain the Hammerhead there and, I guess, the reason why it's there, and if it needs to remain, or just maybe explain that Hammerhead really quick?
What I know about the Hammerhead was because it was needed for the, let me start with the big picture. So when you look at that project that developed to the north, right?
John, can you speak into the mic? It's really hard to hear you.
Oh, sure. Okay. Was that you, Michelle? You look at that project to north, we're just simply mirroring that extension of that little throat on the west side that becomes the private shared driveway. But they needed that Hammerhead for fire access. So now, we're matching it on the south side. It will still be there. There was some desire from the police, the fire department to have it, and then extending it to Gulling Road.
Okay, so the fire department requested it stay?
Yes.
Okay. Want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a follow-up. Oh, go ahead, Vice Chair Wieski.
Thank you. John, do you know, is Gulling Way the north end of it from the Hammerhead north? Is that a public street?
It's all private.
That's all private?
Right. We have a maintenance agreement that we're going, a maintenance and a agreement amongst the four property owners that will share that driveway, identical to what's going on to the north, but it is private.
Okay. So that, the maintenance of it will not be deeded back to the city and will not be the city's responsibility in the future?
That's correct.
It's just a private roadway?
Private roadway, private shared driveway with four parties, four people that are party to the agreement.
Okay. That resolves my question from earlier then. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, John. And there's no public parking on that street? Is that correct?
No parking, not enough room for parking. We accepted the condition number 10, which adds the signs, the red curb, and no parking. And then, of course, the other part of enforcement is, you know, everybody's in it together. They know what they're buying into, and you can't park there. You park on Gulling Road if you have guests, or in your driveway. Each of, each one of these has at least two-car garage, and then the two driveway spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question for you on that enforcement issue. That was something I was curious about. Can you, can you show me real quick on that diagram? Where, there is no street parking, right?
No street parking.
Okay, and so you're going to have signs and red curb?
Sign, we have one other condition, too, that says it's going to be posted on both ends, not through street. So that just is a deterrent to through traffic. Certainly, people can go through if they wander through there if they wish to. And then, red curb on both sides in addition to the signing that would say no parking, fire lane, something like that, pretty typical for 24-foot-wide streets.
Okay, and I do have a question about the enforcement of that. How will the city enforce that?
Enforce the?
The fact that it's a fire lane? Or is access for the fire department?
The way they enforce, the way they deal with any of them, right? I mean, if you have red curb, no parking, signs, you have alleyways that are all over town that are 20-foot wide. So I guess maybe staff?
Yeah, that's a question for staff.
Staff, yeah.
Well, wait a, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, John?
Yeah.
You just stated that that is a private driveway. That's not public. So therefore, how does, how is this going to be, who's going to enforce it?
That's my question.
How's it going to be enforced?
For the record, Bill, senior civil engineer. The access is, it's a private, you know, access easement, and it's also a fire lane. We designated it as such and signed it as such. You know, access on it, defined driveway, you know, parking on it, it really is, it ends up being a code enforcement, no different than people parking in dry, in front yards and stuff on their front lawns. It's a code enforcement issue, and they can contact code for enforcement of that.
Mr. Kaufman?
John? So is a builder doing a disclosure to the purchasers, then?
Do we have that in the CCNRs, do you know? We have the one disclosure that's in the conditions. You're talking about disclosure on this?
No parking.
No parking? We could add it if it made you feel better. We'd be glad to. That'd be fine.
Yeah, I would agree with that if you're agreeable to a disclosure that says that the property owners are aware that there's no parking because it's a fire lane. Do we need to talk about the specific language of that if we're going to add a condition? Everyone's comfortable that that will be. Got it? Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Wisely?
Madam Chair, in the past, we've seen other issues where this, where there's been no parking on the streets, and the driveways have not been long enough to handle a full-size vehicle, such as a pickup or, you know, a large SUV. Can I ask what the length of the driveways are?
20-foot, and then, of course, you got the four-foot of driveway that you use, I mean, excuse me, sidewalk, that you use for backup, right? I mean, the physical distance is 24 feet.
Until you hit edge of pavement.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Taylor?
John, I just have one quick question, Commissioner Taylor. To address the public comment earlier, do you see this private road as a way for people to cut through, or will there be any increased traffic there except for the people, the residents in there?
Can't imagine it. You know, I think it serves a purpose to the people to the north that can now come south, right? Those four lots to the north. Otherwise, you know, when you want to do a shortcut, you want to do a shortcut. And it's sort of like going out of your way, in my view. These people right here that might want to wander to the south, but other than that, it just serves no purpose. I just don't see the desire, frankly. Thank you.
Thanks. Additional questions? Discussion? Motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Kaufman?
In the case of LDC 15-00017, and these, we'll need to make two different motions. A tentative, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to conditions. I can make all the findings with the addition of number 13 stating the?
14.
Or, I'm sorry, number 14, the builder to have a no parking disclosure signed by the purchaser.
For the fire lane?
For what?
For the fire lane?
Yeah, for the fire lane. And I can make, again, make all the findings.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Commissioner Wisely, I'll second that with the addition of condition number 14. I can make all the findings.
Okay, any discussion? Staff's clear on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
We need a motion for the special use permit.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry. Thank you. I'll accept another motion.
In the case of LDC 15-00017, I'll, let's see, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject conditions. I can make all the findings.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Wieski, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, second motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with your project. On to the next agenda item, 6.2, case number LDC 15-00019, CVS 7th Street Zone Change. Any disclosures before we hear from Mr. Gilbert? I will disclose that I've visited this many times in my life, parking lot area.
Commissioner Kaufman, I visited that site.
Not just the parking lot. Wait, that sounded weird. Thank you. The building, this property. Commissioner Reno?
I visited the site.
Commissioner Olivas, I visited the site.
The liquor store? Kidding.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Mr. Taylor, I visited the site and corresponded with applicant's representative.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wisely, as did I.
Okay. Mr. Gilbert, an introduction for us before we hear from the applicant?
Sure. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a request to change the zoning designation from neighborhood commercial to community commercial on a 2.78-acre site located near the intersections of 7th and Keystone. The change would allow for additional commercial and service enterprises that are more appropriate for the community at large. The site's well-positioned for this intensification, given its proximity to arterial roadways and freeway on and off ramps and adjacent community commercial zoning. Staff, we did receive one general, excuse me, three general inquiries on the request with no statements to be related to the planning commission. Staff can make the applicable findings and suggest a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thanks. Applicant representative, do you have a presentation for us?
I do. Michelle, can you load that PowerPoint, please? I'd like to quickly run through a PowerPoint.
Great, thank you.
I think, I feel that we have a real nice opportunity here with a redevelopment project. Basically, my client has committed to completely scraping the site, and some of the images that I'm going to show you, I think, give us a great opportunity for redevelopment and bringing this thing up to more current standards. This gives you an idea of the level of commercial activity around the property. It's entirely commercial, including the property to the west that's actually residential, excuse me, commercial zoned. As you can see there, there's the site, proposed CC, the rest is existing zoning, even NC and those couple of duplexes across Elgin to the west. Existing front of building, I think it's, I look at this as a great opportunity for all of us to get rid of that. You can see not a lick of landscape. There is the rear elevation of the building that's visible from the freeway. That's actually a view from the parking lot near Elgin. There's the parking lot facing west. Again, no landscape. There is one a little bit in the background there, but very small strip is the only on property. That's looking to the east. No landscape, again, just parking. There is a view from the freeway going eastbound on I-80. The bowling in the foreground, and then, of course, the back of that building. And here's where I think we have great opportunity. Look at that slope. That's westbound on I-80, looking at that barren slope. And then, of course, some pretty boxy architecture as well. So here gives you a little perspective. You can see the existing footprint of the building is what's going on. And what we have proposed is the replacement CVS. Of course, it's a smaller prototype, goes down to 14,500 square feet, and then, a fast-food user. Also notice the spacing of the driveway. This is important on arterial street. We now have further separation from 7th Street intersection at Keystone. You can see the existing driveway that is just to the east of the one driveway that we have today. Mr. Salegi is with me this evening as well, if he had any questions more technical in traffic. He did a study to look at the change in land use and the change in driveway configurations and its very favorable operation. There is the exist, there's the proposed site plan. So look at that area to the south, where I think we're going to have a real nice improvement is, that will be a two-to-one slope. I'm working with a landscape architect, Dale Dorr, on that. Shows some stabilization of the slope, a really nice treed landscape slope. And then, the other is going to be that, that buffer area in here on Elgin. I think that's going to serve a lot of purpose. And then, also, the street trees. Sorry, you guys can't see this. I do like to point with the laser pointer, but think about those street trees there. The street trees, pardon me?
That was a nice touch, though.
And then, this area here is where I'm saying I think we're going to just have a really nice view from the freeway. I was trying to do some visual analysis, 3D simulations, and we just didn't have all the resources, enough design detail on the architecture, architecture for this level of approval. But it is, from what I'm understanding, a very committed deal. And then, there's a little more detail on that slope. So, you know, I could get into the findings if you'd like, and... So, you know, I could get into the findings if you'd like, and just wanted you guys to know how far along this is in commitment and design and raising the site to make for a nice redevelopment area. So I'll just save it for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kropodick for the nice presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We'll open it up for public comment? Unless, I'm sorry, staff, do you, Nathan, do you have anything to add? Any information for us from staff on this project?
Nathan Gilbert, just, would just like to add, and of course, we're looking at his own change, not a specific project, given the area of the site, so any development, commercial development on a site over an acre, which at least conceptually it is there, it would require a site plan review.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, public comment on this item? I have Anna Marie Vera. Please correct me if I said that wrong.
Vera.
Vera. If you don't mind just saying your name one more time into the microphone there, and you have three minutes, thanks.
Okay, I'm Anna Marie Vera, and this is basically part of the Keystone Corridor, this area, and it's, it's a very blighted, as he illustrated, it's a very blighted part of the neighborhood. So it definitely could use some development, but my concern is, it's such a tight area, it's really close to a Starbucks, and the Starbucks is already causing a lot of traffic problems, so I guess I want to ask the developer if they're planning a drive-through pharmacy. I know a lot of the other CVSs, the one in Gilroy is going to a smaller operation as a drive-through pharmacy, like the one over at Walgreens in downtown Reno, which I think attracts a lot of drug addicts for drugs. You know, it's quick and easy, it's a drive-through pharmacy, so that's something I was concerned about if they were going to do that. And then, the other issue is, this neighborhood, I think, is in need of food, and a lot of, I think, people that are going to get food establishments can't get approval. It's easier to get approval for a bar versus food. So, I think most of these people that want to start food establishments have such a hard time doing it, that they end up starting a bar that serves food. So I think this part of the neighborhood would, would really benefit from a nice food establishment, or perhaps even live work spaces like they have in Midtown. And, so I was wondering if it was going to be fast food, or if they were going to do like a nice, you know, food place that would really attract college students, I think this, what the neighborhood needs. There was an example of that, that they demolished, of, it was called, I'm trying to remember the name of the restaurant. It was a Cuban bakery called the, over in that mall that they demolished on Fifth Street. The, I can't remember the name of it. Anyway, it, it had a great following and it was not fast food. So I guess I'd like to ask the developer while they're here, what exactly they're planning.
Okay, Ms. Vera, we appreciate your comments. We don't do conversation and can't address them directly during the public comment period, but perhaps we can get some of those questions answered during the discussion.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I forgot one thing, I don't know how long I've talked, but I wanted to make sure that there was no.
She take, I'm sorry, you took your.
Did I take the three minutes?
Oh, you, okay.
I didn't think so. So, the one other concern that I know, another resident who sent me the information about this meeting, Fred, he had sent you guys a letter, apparently, asking if it was going to be a casino. So, I wasn't, I personally wasn't clear on what community commercial would actually allow, and that's the issue. So that's another question I have for the council is, what is the difference between neighborhood commercial and community commercial? What does that actually allow? Allow for? Because in, in a lot of these other developments, they've had, they, the developers haven't been honest with the citizens as to what they were planning on doing exactly. So those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your comments and your input. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion and questions. Commissioners, any questions of the developer or staff? Yes, Commissioner Wiesley?
I think that we're going to, Nathan, could you come up for a second? For all of our benefits, could you go over what would be included in the community commercial versus neighborhood commercial?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, there are a number of distinctions. The application indicates that the request is primarily related to drive-throughs. Drive-through, accessory drive-through uses, whether it be for a pharmacy or a fast food restaurant, Starbucks type of use, is prohibited in the neighborhood commercial zone. And in correspondence, before Mr. Kropodick represented them, that, that was the indication, this application states that that is the reason, primary reason for the request. An exception to that is across the street where that Starbucks is, that's in the West University Neighborhood Plan, and that overlay district actually has an exemption to allow drive-throughs in the neighborhood commercial zone, but that's, that's a unique situation. There are probably too many to, to list. Community commercial, again, is intended to serve the community at large, where neighborhood commercial is to promote walkability between residential districts and, you know, typically general personal service types of uses. The, the grocery store across the street is a neighborhood commercial, so it, you know, there is some, some variability, but the intent of the NC zone is to have walkable, just general, go into convenience store type of use, whereas the community commercial is serving the community at large with, with some more intense uses, like auto repair, building landscape material, just, just more generally viable commercial uses for the community at large.
And this would make sense because it is the, I mean, it's on a major arterial plus the proximity to the freeway?
Proximity to freeway onway off-ramps, to ma, to minor arterials, and adjacency to the exact same zone.
All right, thank you.
And to add to that, casinos are not allowed use.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Comments? Commissioner Taylor?
This is for John. Could you address the traffic concerns, please?
Let me call up our expert, Paul Saleghi.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. For the record, I am Paul Saleghi, we prepared the traffic report for this. We did include fast, drive-throughs on both buildings, the, what we showed is a fast food building and the pharmacy building. When you put the drive-throughs on, the trip generation generally goes up, so that would be a worst-case scenario. The building that is being removed, however, was much larger than the proposed pharmacy, so the trip generation slightly less with the new proposed uses, even at the high end of the scale of what we were considering. The big issue on traffic was that driveway spacing had been poor. They had two driveways, and there was some skewing problems with their Rayleigh's driveway. Now with the site configured as it is, driveway spacing is met. So traffic-wise, it's relatively clear. I failed to listen to your question, I guess. Did you have a specific item that you wanted to address beyond those?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we addressed the traffic concerns that were brought up in public comment.
Very good, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Other questions or discussion? Vice Chair Wieski?
Thank you. Just for the public's information, in our staff report and in our binders regarding permitted uses and what CC allows and NC allows, in this evening's staff report, the list of items allowed under CC are 14 pages long. If you'd like a copy of it, I'll share mine with you and you can go through, I've highlighted everything in there, because one of the things that we have to look at, from the Planning Commission's point of view in order to make the findings, is not what the applicant's representative is presenting tonight, but what can be allowed on this property for the next umpteen, whatever infinity years until somebody does another zone change to it. And so that's why we go through and we highlight all the changes and what's going to be permitted by use now, or in the future, without a special use permit, or without any, any additional input from the community, staff, Planning Commission, or City Council. So, there's a lot that goes on in here for 14 pages. That's why it wasn't going through, and, and, you know, you asked about a restaurant, restaurant with alcohol service, is it now going to be a permitted use? Restaurant without alcohol is going to be a permitted use. So, it's whoever the tenant is and whatever they bring forward, that's free enterprise. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Free enterprise within a regulated community commercial zone.
That's funny.
Other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a quick comment. I think that switching this to CC is appropriate, and given the, the roads around it, the access to the freeway, I, I just believe it's an appropriate zone change.
Okay, other comments, or I'll take a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wiesley?
Prepared to make a motion. In case number LDC 15-00019, CVS Seventh Street Zone Change, based upon the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. I can make all the findings.
Okay, do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you, good luck with your project.
Madam Chair, just wanted to say thank you for your service to the commission. You know, I respect what you guys do and I really appreciate your service, you did a fine job, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kropodick, appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is item 6.4, case number LDC 15-00020, the church at Reno, Inc. Do we have any disclosures before we jump into this one? None?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I've visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Commissioner Taylor, I'm very familiar with the site.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I.
Commissioner Kaufman, I did too.
Commissioner Stapleton, familiar with the site? Nathan, take it away.
Good evening again, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. This is a request for a zoning map amendment to go from multifamily 21 units per acre, MF 21, to AC arterial commercial on a two-acre site. The site's currently developed with a church and church-school use. The change would allow for commercial and service enterprises geared for the community at large that may warrant access from a major arterial. However, conversations with the applicant's representative indicated that, at least at this point, the church's primary reasoning is to utilize the sign standards within the arterial commercial zone for, for their existing church use. Of course, we're looking at a zone change for the site at large. The parcel's location off of North McCarran Boulevard and adjacency to existing AC and CC zoning support the zone, the change in zoning. Any non-residential development, including expansion of the sign under the AC standards, would require a special use permit for residential adjacency, given the multifamily 30 units per acre zoning to the west. We received one statement in opposition from Barbara Poole, who indicated that residential zoning should remain residential zoning. Staff can make the applicable findings and suggest a recommendation of approval to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant here?
I believe so.
Okay. Nathan, do you have anything else, considering there's no applicant, anything else to tell us?
I'm available for any questions.
Okay. We'll open this up for public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions. Comments? Commissioner Kaufman?
Since the applicant's not here, I guess it'll just be discussion. Or, Nathan, I'll ask you this question. Special use permit or site review for this sign? Part of my concern is MF 30, having residents there, just for the sign, how, how are we going to protect them from lighting issues or, you know?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate.
Or where is that sign going?
Associate Planner, it hasn't been discussed in conversations with the applicant's representative. Again, this is a congregation. Members have come in, probably will be about a year ago, looking to expand their sign. Sign standards in residential zoning districts are very restrictive. There's a six-foot height maximum, it precludes changeable display, you know, where you, my, church might indicate Sunday services and that sort of thing. And so, they were looking for an opportunity to expand the sign because of the residential adjacency, the zoning, and they actually own another, a separate parcel, it's also zoned MF 30, and then there's the apartments also to the west. That would be whatever the sign looked at, if it's going to be proposed under the AC standards, if this were adopted, a special use permit would be required for the Planning Commission to review and see if it's appropriate or not.
Okay, so, it looks like for sure, special use permit would have to come through the Planning Commission, then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reno?
Madam Chair, I have to make a little disclosure here, I didn't notice, the applicant is John Loader. I have a professional relationship with him, he's a surveyor and I'm an engineer and we do a lot of work together. And so, just disclosing, I don't think that'll affect my decision here, but I didn't notice that earlier, thanks.
Thank you for that disclosure. Other questions or comments?
I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, just, Commissioner Reno, could you, when you say you do work together, what's the relationship? Do you?
I'm an engineer and so, he's a surveyor, I hire him out to do work.
Okay, you hire him.
I hire him, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Taylor?
Nathan, I had a question, and I talked to you earlier. So with this zoning change, they can have a sign that's 35 feet high?
Correct.
Have you seen any plans for what their sign might look like?
Again, it would require a special use permit for residential adjacencies, so the Planning Commission would have the opportunity to review the appropriateness.
Okay, so we'll see the sign before.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, other questions, comments, discussion, a motion? Vice Chair Wieski?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to make a comment, I don't have any questions for you, Nate. I just spent the last three-day weekend traveling through some old communities who have gone through some great redevelopments, and, and I saw some things that make a lot of sense to the Reno area, and one of them is signage, and during the trip, my wife even commented several times over several days about no-tall signs, even the grocery store signs on the building signage is smaller than what we have here, and I'm, I know that our code allows for that 30-foot sign with an SUP, and that's the only reason I'm going to vote on this tonight in favor of, but if it wasn't for that, I would be denying it right away, because I have seen businesses who have come before us, the Planning Commission, over the last 10-plus years, who have said they won't bring their business to town if they don't have a sign, and yet, their businesses are very successful in the communities I was just in with no-tall signs and much smaller building signage than what we have allowed here. So, it's just food for thought, it's something I picked up on over the last weekend, but as long as we see it again, I'll vote, be voting in favor of this.
Commissioner Kaufman? I kind of, I agree with you, Commissioner Wieski, that my concern isn't that, my concern for the residents there, but, you know, I can go along with this project based upon us having a SUP in front of us where we can regulate more or for the residents, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno?
Yes, Commissioner Reno?
Well, the sign really, I mean, that's kind of the, what they're putting forth, I'm looking at it as a zone change, and, and being AC next to AC, I see that that is appropriate. And with the protections we have in place for special use permit on signage and so forth for residential adjacency, I think we'll have a good property there that we can regulate next to the residential property.
Thanks for your comments. I also, I just want to say I appreciate your comments, I really appreciate the insight of. I really appreciate the insight of Vice Chair Wieski. I think that's a great comment, and perhaps, you know, there's always opportunities to talk about revisiting things in the code. It's one of the things that the Planning Commission can do, so maybe opportunity for larger conversation for you guys.
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I'll make a motion. In the case of LDC 15-00020, The Church at Reno Incorporated, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the zoning map amendment, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Commissioner Taylor, I make a second and I can make all the findings.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Nathan. Next item on the agenda is 6.5, case number LDC 15-00007, Bella Vista Ranch Village B2. I will do disclosures first.
Commissioner Kaufman, one of the disclosures is that I do live in that area, not in this development, but close by. So, and I drive by the site a lot.
Commissioner Reno, I have visited the site, received a phone call and responded to that, but didn't speak with the applicant.
Commissioner Olivas, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I have been to the site.
Commissioner Wieski, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Taylor, I work by the site, so I'm familiar with it.
Commissioner Wiesley, I've visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Vern?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, this is a request for tentative map to develop 121-unit single-family residential subdivision on about 23 and 1/2 acres. Site is located on the west side of Echo Valley Parkway, west of its intersection with Windwalker Drive and Long Meadow Drive. The site is located in the Bella Vista Plan Unit Development. This area was mapped previously, and it also contained the school site that you saw the PUD amendment on a few months ago, and has worked its way through the council and been approved. So basically what they're doing is just remapping this area, all the lots and the development meet the standards of the PUD, and staff is recommending approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Do we have the applicant's representative here?
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Randy Walter. I'm with Places Consulting, may representing Corona Cyan LLC, the owners of the property. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Madam Chair for all of her efforts and work on the Planning Commission. I know your position's not an easy one. I've dealt with enough planning commissions in the 40-some years I've been in business to know how difficult your position is, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
As Vern mentioned, this is a continuation of the school site relocation that you saw back in September. This is the existing, what the existing school site was. As you know, through the PUD amendment, we moved the school site to this location. This is the B2 area. Old school, I use a pointer, so you can actually see where I'm pointing to. And that area was originally tentative mapped. It included the school site. And at the time this was done, there was an eight-acre school site there. The lots that you see matched the B1 lots in this location. They're basically 40 by 70. There was 136 lots with this particular subdivision. This is the new tentative map with the school site eliminated from the property. The lots that you see are now compatible with the lots to the north in Village A. They're basically 50 by 105. They're actually a little bit deeper. These lots are deeper than these. This is 121 lots. It's basically a net change of 15 lots less than what was originally approved for the With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We are in concurrence with the conditions of approval in the staff report, and we respectfully request your approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Vern, do you have anything to add? Mr. Walter's presentation, okay. We'll open up for public comment at this time. I have a public comment from Mr. Boster.
For the record, my name is Mike Boster with the Wash County School District, and I just wanted to come forward tonight and give you some updated numbers for the three schools that this property will be zoned for. Back in August, we provided the 2013-2014 enrollment. We now have count date numbers for 14-15. And just to go down these real quick, Double Diamond Elementary went from 777 kids up to 849. DePauli went from 1105 to 1148. And Damone Ranch High School from 1606 to 1617. So I wanted to provide those updated numbers to you. I did want to thank Corona Cyan and before them, Centex. This is one of a handful of developers that offers up dedicated school sites to the school district. They are not required to do that by NRS. We are typically required to not only pay for appraisals, but to pay for the land and of course, all the improvements on the property. So thank you to Mr. Walter and to also Corona Cyan. Unfortunately, we don't have any money to build the school, but nonetheless, it's a start. Land is a good start. The final thing I'd like to add would be, we've been putting a disclosure on our most recent tentative map condition recommendations that says, and I've got it here, I was ready for the Palisades, and if I may, I'll just read that straight out here. "A disclosure shall be made by the developer to each homebuyer on their closing documents that students in this subdivision may be assigned to the nearest schools with available capacity in the event that the zoned schools cannot accommodate additional students." And I'm not sure if I got that to Mr. Klose or not, but if not, I can send that to him in written version as well. Those are all my comments. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Bonnie Hansen, that is in the staff report under condition 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boster. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. Questions? I do have a question for Mr. Boster on page, this is 162 of our packet, the letter you just referenced. This is a letter you submitted for both this and the next item on our agenda for the total number of units?
Yes, ma'am.
For the 600 new units. And did you do an analysis, and maybe I'm just missing it, of for these schools, what it would, you know, what it is at now, what it would take it over for the need for these two projects? Is this the 164, 42, and 82?
Yes, they'd be slightly higher, given the, well, actually, they wouldn't be slightly higher. Those are the actual impacts based on our student generation factors. You just add that to what we have now, yes, that's the analysis, 164 Elementary, 42 Middle, and then 82 High School. But that does take into account not only this item, but the following item as well.
Right, so we are already over capacity, and we will add 160 to that on the elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
For the middle, it looks like we're good?
So far, so good. And then at Damone?
Already over capacity, so.
We would get overcapacity at some point. I will mention at Double Diamond, we have, just put in our third portable classroom unit, which holds two classrooms each, so we have six classrooms there. And then at Damone Ranch High School, we have four portables in place, so eight classrooms. So those are the measures we're taking right now that we can take to accommodate the additional students.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Vice Chair Wieski?
In the case of LDC 15-00007, Bella Vista Ranch Village B2, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, subject to conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second, and I can make all the findings.
Okay, and I do want to have discussion before we take a vote on this. For me personally, this is an issue that we've talked about before with the schools, and one of our findings is number four, availability of public services. And for me, this and the project following, 600 units, it tips the scales. And I just, I appreciate the letter from the school district. It says what the options might be for funding. None of those are solid or perhaps even realistic opportunities. And so for me, I don't know what to do. Perhaps this is the time for developers to start doing a little rabble-rousing, because I think the money's not there and the schools aren't there. And you guys know that for me, I need to be able to make the findings, and I can't make that finding, so I'll be voting no on this item. So if there's no further discussion, I'll take.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno. I think the way that they add the disclosure in there to the people that buy these homes buys them time to address the school situation, and that's how I can make the finding. I think that by doing that, everybody knows what they're getting themselves into. They may be bust around, but it also gives the school district options to move kids around as needed. But we don't know what the future, I mean, these are projections. As time gets closer, we'll see how many students actually end up in the school, and so that's why I can make that finding.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate the condition being in there. It doesn't get me there, though, but disclosure to the homebuyers, great. Any other discussion on this motion before I call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Motion carries 6-2-1.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Kaufman?
Before we go to the next item, could we take a five-minute break, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take five minutes. We'll be back at 5:28. Mission meeting back to order, and we'll move on to item 6.6, case number LDC 15-00006, Bella Vista Ranch Villages C and D. Disclosures. That's what I was going to do until I saw you mouthing something at me.
Disclosures?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was going to do. Thanks. I didn't, I couldn't read your lips. Disclosures, I have been there.
Commissioner Kaufman, I've been there.
I've visited the site.
I've visited the site, Commissioner Olivas.
Commissioner Wieski, I've been there too.
Commissioner Taylor, I've been there.
As have I, confidently.
Okay, glad we got that clear. Vern?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, I've been there several times.
Good. That's good to know. That's probably important for your work.
This is a quest for a tentative map to develop a 553-lot, single-family residential subdivision on just under 114 acres. Site is located along the east side of Veterans Parkway, bounded by South Meadows Parkway on the north and the Steamboat Creek on the south. Again, this is largely a result of the relocation of the school site. Villages C and D are here, and the school site is in this area. The lots are proposed to meet all the standards in the PUD, and staff is recommending approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, again, for the record, Randy Walter with Places Consulting, representing Corona Cyan LLC. I just want to show you what you already know. This is the original tentative map that was approved back in 2006, I believe.
Can you speak up, please, into the mic, Mr. Walter?
It's probably not high enough. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I believe it was originally approved in 2005, 2006. At that time, there were 740 lots in the subdivision. This is the revised tentative map. It contains 553 lots. The school site, which is located here, is the reduction off of Village C. There's 51 lots left in Village C than there was originally. This is Village D1, which is final map, so it's not included in the tentative map. We concur with the conditions as presented in your staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. We'll go into, actually, Vern, do you have anything before we go into public comment to add to his presentation? Okay, thank you. Public comment from Mr. Robert Cole. Is that this item? Yes, Mr. Robert Cole? He is, I'm sorry, he does not wish to make a statement, but he is in favor and open to growth. Invert, aye. Oh, I'm looking, I could, sorry, it looked like a zero. It's a one. This is for the next item. I take that back, I'll read it again under the next item. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, that was a preview of Mr. Cole's public comment for the next item, so stay tuned. If there's no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the Commission for questions. For the applicant or discussion? Commissioner Reno?
Madam Chair, just as more of a discussion and comment here, on the last agenda item, I, you know, I could go along with it because of the final, you know, item 12 where they disclosed, but I did want to say that I agree with you, Madam Chair, that there is a real need in this community to provide funding for schools and to help out there. And I appreciate the applicant here providing property that didn't, he didn't have to. And so I think that's, he should be commended for that, and, yeah, I will be voting in favor of this.
Any other discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wieski. Respectfully going to disagree with you again, because I believe as far as the schools go, and I know that given the opportunity, you will share your opinion on it again, that this allows the school district enough time to adjust and make whatever adjustments they need to and what they're required to do, and what they should have been planning for over the last 20, 15 to 20 years since Double Diamond and its residential capacities were established. And so I can make the finding, and I believe that that's no different than sewer capacity, water capacity. Doesn't mean that it's here today, but neither are the residents. So in the near future, the adjustments will be made. So I can make all the findings, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Okay, and since we're having a discussion on it, healthy discussion, I will respond. And also, I missed Mr. Boster on public comment, but I'll give you a chance to come up if you'd like to make a statement. That, I understand your perspective. I think that though they have time to adjust, there's no requirement that they wait for the school district to adjust before they build. If that was a requirement, I would be open to it. That might change my mind. I don't know if it would be something that the developer would agree to, but I think that putting a condition saying that, you know, more schools have to be in place before they can build is one way to address this. The buck's got to stop somewhere. You know, we can't be, you know, allowing development when we just don't have the services to serve it. And this is a pretty stark example of that, and one of the findings and criteria that I think we're clearly being asked to make and to look at on behalf of the community. So that's my position, that's why I can't make that finding number four on this. Any other comment? I do want to, I skipped Mr. Boster, he had a card in for this, so I do want to give him the opportunity if no one wants to continue the discussion. Do you want to comment before we let Mr. Boster? Okay.
Thank you again, Mike Boster with the school district. And just to address Mr. Wieski's concerns about the school district's planning efforts. In the Double Diamond-Damonie area, we've been planning since 95 and before. We have three elementary school sites in the Damone Ranch Double Diamond area. One, which is this one right here with Centex before, and now with Corona. We have one on Wilbermay Parkway, a 10-acre elementary site that we acquired in 2005. And we have a swap site that we have with Mr. DiLoreto on Rio Wrangler Parkway. So we have been planning for many years, especially in this area, because we saw the zoning coming. So also, and I'm taking my district hat off just a little bit, putting my parent hat on, because my kids go to Damone, Double Diamond. on, because my kids go to Demani, Double Diamond, DePoli. It's also up to us as a community and the legislature to step up and fund schools in a different way. And I do believe that as a parent and also as a district employee. So I wanted to make those two points, that the district has planned, we will continue to plan, and I want the legislature to step up as well, y'all to step up, and the district to step up. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on this item or...
I was gonna make a motion, Madam Chairman, when you're ready.
Okay, does anyone else have any? I wanted, I will add just one thing, that for me, you know, part of the reason we review these, you know, again, tentative maps and things, originally done in 2004, that's 10 years, and a lot has changed, so I appreciate the fact that it's coming before us again and we get a chance to weigh in, because services were probably planned and the money was probably there 10 years ago. And for me, I just want to reiterate, and this is a tipping point, because this is like hundreds of kids over. So that's, to me, why on this one, I'm taking this position, because I don't see any concrete plans for the funding, even though the plans are there, the money is not, and this takes us significantly over, you know, 100 kids over where there's already four temporary classrooms, so. Commissioner Taylor?
I just have one, I, you know, I look at this literally when I look at finding number four that I have to make, and it says availability and accessibility of public services such as schools. I don't see the word funding in there, so maybe I just look at it a little bit differently, but that's how I can make it. Plus, it seems like the developers is making resources available and accessible beyond what they're supposed to do with plenty of time. So I just would, that is, that's how I can make the finding.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Wisley?
I also struggle with making these findings, but it is purely how you look at this, and it is a service that the community provides. And much like we talked about before, sewer, water, developments have impact fees, and you would assume as those developments come in and those impact fees are generated and they go into their certain funds, that that is saved then for the future for building schools and things like that. And if that's not working, I agree, then something needs to change. But does it change at this level, or does it change the way it's funded? I think that is the question, and I think the way I'm looking at it, I will be able to support this, because I do see it green with previous comments, that the word funding is not in there. It's availability, accessibility, and then planning for that for the future. Thanks.
I appreciate that. I still can't make the finding for me. Funding isn't there to provide the service, the availability, so that's me. And, you know, we all have to make the findings for our own selves, so.
In the case of LDC 15-0006, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
You have a second?
Commissioner Reno, I'll second that. I can make the findings.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries six to one. Thank you. Good luck with your project and with school funding. Next item on the agenda, LDC 15-00016, 39 Ventures Materials Processing Facility. First, we'll take disclosures on this item. I have been there. Welcome back, everybody. Other disclosures? And I've received, I've been there, I've received emails, and I talked to the applicant's representative. Commissioner Kaufman?
I've visited the site. I also received several emails on this project.
Commissioner Reno, I as well.
Commissioner Levis, I've visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Nowitzki, as did I, and I also spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Taylor, I've visited the site and received emails.
Commissioner Wisley, I've visited the site and received emails.
Okay, thank you. Vern, is this you? Thank you.
Good evening again, Vern Close, Senior Planner. Since request for special use permits to resume and abandon non-conforming use of outdoor processing, assembly, and fabrication, to allow a non-residential development to be located within 300 feet of residentially-zoned property, and to allow the use to operate between hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. for 24 hours. Site contains about six and a half acres located on the southwest corner of the Crystal Park Road, Quillacy Ranch Road intersection in the community commercial zone. The primary issues that we saw with this project potentially were the traffic of the trucks coming in and out of the site, and also the noise generated by the operations on the site as it relates to the residential properties in the vicinity of the site. The applicant did provide a sound study that indicated that the nearest residential properties, the noise from the activity on the site would not exceed code. In fact, it was about 10 decibels less than the ambient noise levels 24 hours a day. The site is also impacted by the railroad tracks. Approximately 40 trains go by that site every day, 24 hours a day. Other issues with regard to the truck circulation, there's a condition recommended to limit truck access to the site, basically just to use the on and off ramps at Verdi to get to the site. The on-ramps are right in this area here, off the map, but basically, they cannot go through any of the residential neighborhoods. The only access is to come, get there from the freeway, and then go back to the freeway and go east or westbound, or actually eastbound to get back on it. And if they need to go westbound, they have to turn around at Boomtown and proceed to the west. Staff believes that all the findings necessary to approve the special use permit can be made, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. I do have a couple other things. I did receive a couple of phone calls today. One was concerned about the, opposed to having the use operate between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., just due to the truck traffic and the noise, that sort of thing. Also got an email that I forwarded you folks from a property owner in this area right here, indicating that this would take all economic viability from his property. In addition, we received a letter from the applicant, which you all have in front of you, requesting amendments to several of the conditions. Conditions 2, 5, 7, and 8. Staff believes that those are minor changes that just clarify when things need to be done, and we are in agreement with those changes. And I can go through those if you'd like, but you have a highlighted version in front of you that kind of shows you what the changes are. The other condition, number six, is related to the operational hours of the facility. Staff is recommending that the crushing operations be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and that all the other operations generally would operate between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then for emergency or non-standard situations, they can operate 24 hours a day with notice to the area residents by signs at the off-ramps and also on the site that 24 hours in advance that they would be operating during non-standard hours. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Do we have a presentation from the applicant's representative? Mr. Gallagher, thank you.
Chairman and members of the commission, Tom Gallagher with Summit Engineering Corporation here representing 39 ventures on this material recycling project. We've also received some correspondence on it. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff for working so close with it. I think we probably burned up more of Claudia and Vern's time on this than would have been necessary, but it all seemed to work out all right. First of all, I think Vern did a pretty good job of covering it. There's a couple of things that, when he talked about the access to the site, this is the access plan that was submitted with the application. And as you can see, it's a very, very limited access on any local streets or anything of that, anything like that. This thing kind of came about as becoming a non-conforming use due to a zone change and a master plan change that took place as part of the Todd project, and they rezoned and remaster planned. The city of Reno did a whole bunch of different parcels at the same time. And I'm not sure if the Quill, or if the Gavicas had any, or said anything about it, but the zoning of this, when it was approved for granite to use it as a recycling facility was industrial. The new zoning, which I have right here, which I will state for the record, I do not agree with, but that is the new zoning on the property. It's community commercial in that red area, and right here is the property we're talking about, community commercial on the other side. I'm very familiar with this area, having done the Verdi master plan when we did the annexation of the Verdi area. And we have a piece of, we had a piece of property just to the south of this that we had a very difficult time trying to figure out what to put it in on a master plan designation, because a lot of people don't like their house next to the railroad tracks with 30 or 40 trains going by a day. And specifically, it's the Quillacy Meadow where their ranch headquarters was, further down the road, further down Quillacy Ranch Road. But we have what we have, and that's why we have the special use permit for the non-conforming use in front of you today. If it was still industrial, it would be inconformance. I think the rest of the application was pretty self-explanatory. I don't know, we're all here for questions. If you have questions of us, I think most of you have been to the site. It is well screened. There is more landscaping intended to go onto the site. We did do a noise study. The project is in conformance with city ordinances with respect to the noise. And I was telling someone today, I've been on that site three or four times, and every time without reservation that I've been on that site, a train went by. And one time, two trains went by. And they make a lot more noise than the crusher does, and I am kind of sorry that we didn't do a noise contour drawing to indicate when a train goes by, what it actually does to the ambiance of the area, because we're right adjacent to it. Let me see what else I've got here. I don't, I don't think you want me to go through this one item at a time, I wouldn't think, if you've reviewed the staff report, seen the site. I think we have a unique opportunity here. We have basically the right applicant for the right site. These guys have done this stuff before. They have a facility just like it up in Truckee, and I think they're very qualified to do the project. Now, with respect to the comment you got for downgrading the value of the lands out there and that kind of thing, I'd like to submit this, which is located on the gate entering the property, the gentleman who sent the email about the aggregate pit. So we're not doing a pit. I want to clarify that. We are doing a recycling facility where the material will be brought in, stockpiled, crushed, or screened, and then it will be sent back out for new projects. It's a unique site because it is on the west side of town, and it is going to keep a lot of trucks from driving clear through town to get to the other, to the other recycling site on the other end of town. The one condition that we had, that we had a concern with, and I've attempted to modify that, in the hours of operation, what we'd like to request, actually, in the community commercial zone, the hours of operation that are allowed is, I think, 6 to 11. And what we would like to request as a kind of a compromise is from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. five days a week. And in the case of a project that is being constructed like Interstate 80, where there's a lot of material coming off for recycling and that kind of stuff, and the contract constraints say that they have to operate 24 hours a day, that's when the signage would all go up, and we would bring material onto the site for 24 hours a day. Are you understanding what I'm saying? Okay.
If you could repeat the second part, where I think we're looking at the actual language, so if you could just tell us what you're suggesting alternatively to what we have...
The language that I'm suggesting is the crusher operation shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. five days a week, and from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. 24 hours a day, only during emergencies and when supporting public works projects that are constrained under contract for hours of operation.
That's clear.
I think maybe Commissioner Taylor might know about one of those that has happened in the past, I think on Interstate 80.
We have to wait to have discussion till after, then sure she can address that. I just wanted to clarify that one, so, but thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kautz, the owner of the project, has a couple of comments he'd like to make to give you a little bit of background on what they do and what they're, what they have done. And other than that, we've got a lot of people here to answer questions. If you have questions, if you don't, we'll cut it short.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you, Vern. Just as Tom said, sorry, I didn't realize this moves, just as Tom said, we've had, I think, extra attention from the city.
Could you just say your name real quick? That's more for the record. Thank you.
Ryan Kautz. So I grew up in construction. I was born and raised in Truckee. I hold my Nevada and California general engineering licenses and have for approximately 10 years. I also hold my CEM in Nevada, so we do remediation. We also do environmental consulting. Remediation is what we do day in, day out. We work for the railroad. We work for Kinder Morgan. We work for the power companies. Just as Tom also said, I've been involved in a similar operation in Truckee for nine years. It's the Hobart Mills Recycle Center, just outside Truckee. I've seen how it works. I've seen what goes well, how to interact with neighbors. I think this project's going to be beneficial. It's recycling this waste. It's not waste, but the concrete and asphalt would have otherwise been landfilled. The site does have a remediation aspect. There is petroleum-impacted soil on site, so you'd be limited in, there's a lot of other uses you would not be able to do on that property. That is exactly what we do, is clean up similar sites. This is the first that I've owned myself. We've been a contractor on dozens and dozens, including Truckee Rail Yard, several in Sparks. We're adding a huge amount of landscaping for screening and noise. I want to say somewhere in the range of 140 new trees to the property. Most all the borders of the property get a landscape strip. When we were looking for, not necessarily materials processing, but a shop in Reno Verdi area, we came across this and couldn't find a more appropriate property, because it is next to the railroad tracks, because it was industrial, because it has been an aggregate pit since at least the 50s. We have maps from Tamoa, historical maps showing so, and freeway access. So not only is it beneficial to us to have direct freeway access, but that also limits how many neighborhoods and neighbors we affect. Crystal Park Road is an N dot maintained road, so we're actually not on any county or city roads. My property goes directly, my property touches an N dot road and then on to the inner My property touches an NDOT road, and then onto the interchanges. I did live at the Verdi facility... I'm sorry, the Hobart Mills facility for seven years. So, I actually lived at a much larger... It's a 130-acre site, at the onsite caretaker home for seven years. So, I know what it takes to operate this, and I know what it takes to be a good neighbor because I was that neighbor. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the detailed presentation from the applicant. And we probably will have questions, but we have to take public comment first. So, we will go into public comment. I have a number of public comment request cards here. And I will... A whole lot of public comments, so I'm looking forward to hearing from you. But please, if someone before you said something that you're gonna say, we've got a long night still ahead of us. First, Michael Pierzik, and following that, Nate Rupert. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to read these more closely. You do not wish to make a statement, but you are in opposition. Will destroy all economically viable use of said property to my lots APN 038-891-06. I am 400 feet away from the location. Mr. Rupert also does not wish to make a statement, but he is in favor. Laura Tadman is in favor. Say your name one more time, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Mitch Gerlinger. I'm with Geo Science Associates. I've been hired by Ryan Kautz and 39 Ventures to handle any of the environmental aspects that he needs help with. I'm a Nevada CEM and Nevada licensed asbestos consultant. So, basically, I'm just here to ask, answer any questions that you guys might have about the environmental aspects of the project, and I'll be available at your leisure.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate that. Mr. Gerlinger. Robert Quilice is... Does not wish to make a statement, but he is in favor. Ryan Katz?
So, yeah.
Oh, that's... Gotcha. Okay. No problem.
I already got my chance.
Okay. All right. See how fast we're going through these? Marjorie Quilice. She also does not wish to make a statement, but she is in favor. She approves of this development 100%. I am a neighbor next to this business.
My name is Reed Simmons. I'm a commercial real estate broker with Avis &amp; Young. And I'm in favor of this project, but I can't speak as eloquently about its merits as Mr. Gallagher has, so I won't even try. But it seems to me that the success or failure of a project like this hinges on the integrity of the applicant. Is the applicant someone who will honor his commitments and fulfill his obligations in the true spirit of the conditions? Or is he someone who will skate by and barely fulfill his commitments and stay just barely within the fringes of compliance? I helped Mr. Kautz purchase his property in my role as a commercial real estate broker, and it was a difficult transaction fraught with many challenges that would have made most buyers throw up their hands in frustration. But Mr. Kautz, not only did he rise to the occasion, but he did so with grace and with professionalism. And I've come to know him since then as someone whose word is non-negotiable, someone who, when he makes a commitment, you know it's a done deal, end of story. I know he's very passionate about this project, and he's passionate about it for the right reasons. And so, I hope that you'll move to approve or move to approve this project this evening. Recommend approval. But as you do so, I also hope that you'll take comfort in knowing the fact that Mr. Kautz, as the applicant, is the right person for the job, and we'll see it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Carly... Hi, Carly. Carly Borchardt.
Carly Borchardt, for the record. I just really am here to follow along. I did receive the Washoe County information on this project, and there was a Verdi open house scheduled for 10/23, which was canceled, and then apparently had anyways. Same day, I got a notification on the morning of the 23rd, when I had already had a busy schedule. So, I wasn't able to attend, so I hadn't gotten much information. Obviously, my number one concern was the 24-hours-a-day operation. I'm very glad to hear that that's being addressed by both city staff and hopefully you guys. And then just one other small concern that I do personally have. I like to be able to see the person that's doing the project and know what's going into it. But when this was in operation temporarily for Granite several years ago, the trucks did use our small-town roads, because a lot of those trucks that need to go westbound have to go eastbound up to Boomtown and go through roundabouts that are not designed for 18-wheelers. So, there was inevitably a lot of trucks that used our small-county roads, and I would like to see that that be addressed. It sounds like this could be a very viable operation, but those are my main concerns. Just to stipulate on that, too, it wasn't just the trucks on the road, but the dust and the dirt that they drug out with them. It wasn't just the noise or the traffic, but it did make a mess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borchardt. Robert Cole. He's in favor. He is open to growth in Verdi. Beth Con Cole. She is in favor. She supports new business in the Verdi area. Chance Reading. He is in opposition.
Hi, guys. Thank you. My name is Chance Reading, and I do live... I own these two properties right here. I live there. My family lives there. And I just wanted to kinda speak my piece about this. I did go to the open house, and I have looked at the documents. I'm concerned land opener... Or landowner, sorry, in the Verdi community. I think myself and some other residents have some real issues with what's going on. We invested in this area for a couple of reasons. One is the proximity to Reno and Tahoe, but also because of the natural beauty, the scenic nature, the mountain landscape, things like that. The wildlife is important to us, and there's a lot of wildlife in this area. The waterways, which include the Truckee River, the Verdi or Tamoa ditch, as well as the steamboat ditch. Outdoor activities and the access to this area, including hiking, biking, and some of the trophy fishing sections on the Truckee. 39 Ventures is proposing, as you know, crushing, stockpiling, and aggregate recycling facility. It's currently zoned residential commercial, and while it was zoned industrial in the past, this is no longer the current usage, and I do not believe current with the usage of land typically in this area. And it was revoked and changed for reason. In their proposal, there will be a large-scale industrial rock crusher, many pieces of heavy equipment to move rocks and load trucks. 24-hour operation has been discussed, including weekends, and projecting almost 40 trucking trips per day, which in their report does not include in their night or special operating timelines. Some of the traffic issues that I have, which are a big concern, the road that they are using to go westbound to avoid the Verdi community residential roads is... Goes right in front of my driveway, and there are three landowners that are on that driveway. It will have an impact to the street network. It will have a potential conflict with cyclists and the proposed Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way, which has been designed to give people access to this area, both recreationally and recreationally, basically. They are, again, proposing to redirect to avoid the residential community streets. What they felt to mention is that they are using residential streets to access the highway. And there is a safety issue, in my opinion, with the hairpin turn. It's a hard corner to the left. There are multiple downed road markings or roadside markings where trucks did not make that turn, especially if there's an oncoming car. Some of the other issues, just in general, that I have, again, just going over these quickly. The environment, disturbing the existing leftover aggregate, which is believed to be contaminated. Industrial-level noise. They're saying that I can't hear it, and I guarantee you that I can hear it. I've actually been woken up already by the activity that's going on there. They have crusher-heavy machinery, et cetera. Thank you. And I don't believe that the rest of the Verdi community knows about this project either.
Thank you, Mr. Reading. James Fernhoff wishes to make a statement in favor.
Good evening, and thank you. My name's James Fernhoff. I'm a homeowner on just the northwest side of this project. And I also own a business, Lakeside Transportation, on the east side of this project, which would be on the east side of Verdi. Not only do I support this project, but I also think what hasn't been talked about here is that this particular project's been a recycled property for probably the last 30-plus years, or as long as I've been around here. Matter of fact, Lakeside was partners with Granite on this same piece of property doing recycle when we did the work on 80. With all due respect, a young lady talked about the trucks that were running through the county roads. Those are my trucks with Granite, and we use the freeway. And anybody that's been around a truck knows it's easier to drive it on the freeway than on a narrow county road. This project will also save truck traffic, because all the work on 80 from Truckee down, most of that construction material that's recycled goes all the way out to Sparks now. A couple of other things. This gentleman, Lakeside's worked for him for over 10 years now. Outstanding young gentleman. And he also brings a couple of other things here. He's building a building on the property. This property's gonna be built with the right city codes and wheelchair parking and landscaping. And all this creates jobs, tax base. The recycling material will be taxed. That's a benefit to Reno. And it also starts cleaning up that side of town. And I was supporting the 350 homes at the other end of Verdi, because that's a start to clean up Verdi. And if you've driven through Verdi, a big part of Verdi is closed-up buildings. It's kind of a dump. And this starts the reactivity, the redoing of Verdi and cleaning up Verdi. And I'm for this project, and I hope you people really look at this, that I think it's the right project at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernhoff. Steve Marsh is in opposition. He doesn't wish to make a statement, but he is... He lives at 560 Crystal Park Road in Verdi. He is concerned with the impact this project will have on the surrounding area in regards to overall disturbance, noise, dust appearance, as well as traffic of large vehicles passing through residential neighborhoods along the developing Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way, which includes a blind corner with no shoulder along the proposed traffic route, and also past commercial businesses and restaurants. I'm also concerned with the negative impact it will have on the sensitive marshland adjacent to the proposed site due to water use, et cetera. And finally, Karen Gates is in favor, but she does not wish to make a statement. Is there any other public comment on this item at this time? Okay, we will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for questions and Commissioner Taylor?
I have a couple of questions for Vern or the applicant. In the... With the noticing to the public, they said it was condition seven, it was gonna be on the project identification sign, and then it's taken out in the revised memo that we got. The noticing will be posted on the site, and then the project identification... Project identification sign is crossed out.
The project... Vern Kautz senior planner, the project identification sign, if you saw in your pack, it's just an old cat with a small sign on it. And when I wrote the condition, my idea was that they would post it on that sign. And I believe the applicant just wants to post it on the site, so whether it's on that sign or on the site, the same effect would be created. So, they would post the two on-and-off ramps, and then also the site 24 hours in advance, and keep those signs up continuously until they were done with the operation.
And then the signs for the public, they're changeable copy signs? I'm familiar with changeable message signs. Is that the same thing?
Well, the idea is that the days and hours would change, so they should be... They would, you know...
The portable, changeable message signs. That's what you're talking about. And will they be on NDOT right away? Okay. So, if you're gonna do it 24 hours in advance, obviously, you're gonna have to get a permit that's gonna be there a lot.
Okay. You guys have to put those answers on the record for that conversation. Tom, if you can stand up to get up to the microphone and answer. That's what I mean.
Yes, we are aware that if we have to put them on NDOT right away, we're gonna have to start more than 24 hours in advance to get the permission to do it.
I just wanted to clarify that they will have public... They will be on site 24 hours in advance for the residents out there.
Correct. They'll be in operation 24 hours in advance.
Okay. And then can you talk a little bit about your trackout process for the trucks entering and leaving the site?
The trucks entering and leaving the site? I think I put that up here. We did not bring our traffic engineer with us, but there is a traffic report included in the submittal.
I guess my concern is more about the debris and the dust and the rocks they can bring in and out.
Well, the whole operation is gonna be constantly watered. And if there is debris on the roads, they will absolutely have to clean the roads, period. They'll have to sweep them or whatever they have to do to keep the roads clean. But they will have dust control on site and on all the equipment. They'll all have messers. It's pretty top-of-the-line equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kaufman?
Mr. Gallagher, while you're up there. Yeah, do you have that... How the trucks enter and exit that site? Is there... And I guess the question is, is there only one entrance to the site?
Yes, there is.
Trucks come in one way and leave another, or go out the same way they came in?
There's...
Please come up to the mic.
You've gotta come up to the mic, thanks, if you're gonna...
Do you wanna... Okay. I'm not very good at this stuff. The eastbound trucks would be coming to the Boomtown exit and come back into this. Verdi doesn't have a whole bunch of two-way interchanges. They got a whole bunch of one-way interchanges. The eastbound trucks would just be coming straight into the site and then back out. You have access both directions there. Okay. But Colin, if you wanna give them a little more detail on this, you were involved in the traffic, but... And maybe you can point better, since I'm left-handed.
For the record, Colin Hayes with Summit Engineering.
Make sure you speak into the mic. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Apologize. For the record, Commissioners, Colin Hayes with Summit Engineering. Westbound traffic approaching the site will leave I-80 on exit 3 at Verdi here on the off-ramp, come down South Verdi Road into the site. On the site plan, we can show you the access points. Trucks leaving the site, heading eastbound, will get on the on-ramp here, continue down, continue eastward. If they're heading westbound, they'll get on at the same location. They'll get off at Boomtown, circle back through Boomtown, get on the on-ramp, and then continue westbound. And the haul route only envisioned local deliveries to be using the surface street here, South Verdi Road. Is that clear?
Commissioner Kaufman, can I piggyback on your question? When you're ready.
Sure. And then I'll piggyback on yours.
Can I ask Bill, that section where the trucks have to go back through Boomtown and the roundabout, is that a road that is designed to handle semi-truck traffic? These are gonna be semi-trucks, right?
For the record, Bill Gall, senior civil engineer. When we received this application, I did send it over to NDOT, as all of the access is, as I mentioned, is on NDOT. Controlled roads, including the Boomtown and Garson interchange and off-ramps. They really were unconcerned. They have considered this an aggregate site or, you know, a stockpile site. And they've been using it, or it's been used for this, and utilizing both Crystal Park Road and the ramps and interchanges at Garson for some time during the previous SGP implement. They really had no concerns with the... They're, they really had no concerns with the level and the intensity. Garson interchange itself, yes, it was designed for truck traffic, including the roundabout. It was designed, the ramps and such, with the assumption that there would be a, a truck stop there at some point. So it, you know, the design did include, you know, considerations for, for large trucks.
When you say Garson interchange, you're talking about the Boomtown with the roundabout?
Yes.
Because I've been to that roundabout, and that roundabout is specifically designed for truck traffic, right?
The roundabout, yeah, the, the basic roundabouts, you know, with, they have a mountable curb, so your, your cars will not, you know, they won't, they'll be in the, the roundabout itself. Large trucks won't fit through the, you know, the, the small, narrow roadway, but there's a mountable curb typically on those on the inner side. That's what the trucks will utilize. They, they roll over onto that mountable curb, and they, they do fit through the roundabout.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman, for letting me interrupt.
Is it possible to put up a sign, obviously the trucks, the only exit's going to be eastbound on I-80, is that correct? Regardless of which, if they're going west, because if they go west, they go through the.
That would be, that would be the exit, yes.
Okay.
Make sure to state your name, thanks, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you.
Yeah, so is it possible that there could be some signage put up on the exits that say that, tell the drivers that, so they don't go through Verdi? Is that a possibility?
I'm sure it would be. I mean, the, the drivers are going to be people that are familiar with the site, and that's, you know, we will definitely take that under consideration. I'm not sure. You mean to keep them from going down South Verdi Road?
Right.
The only, the only access we see going on South Verdi Road would be local deliveries, would be for a project. I know you have a project.
Yeah, I understand.
Right there, right now. And it would be for just local deliveries. It wouldn't be to get back on the freeway. But we can certainly make sure that the truckers are notified, whether it's by signage or by mandate. The other thing about this site is, and I'm, I'm not sure if some of you have been here, but there is a truck stop proposed for right there.
Yeah.
So that's.
Well, my concern is some of the residents of Verdi, you know, just trying to eliminate any driver, because I've dealt with the drivers before, and sometimes if they want to go over somewhere and get a sandwich or whatever, you know, they don't necessarily.
Well, it'd be right in the Boomtown parking lot.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Wieske.
Mr. Kautz, since you're up near the microphone, this is a special use permit application that you have before us. And I just want to make sure, for the record, you understand that if your drivers, whether they're Lakeside Trucking or not, they're hauling your materials, or they are, anybody else is going in and out of your facility, they are caught off of this haul route, that you can lose your S U P. Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of that. I'd like to elaborate a little bit and go back to Commissioner Kaufman's comments. I don't know that we.
Well, you're addressing my questions right now.
All right, both, all right. I don't know that we have the jurisdiction to put signage on NDOTs right away, but I would certainly be welcome.
But you do in your yard?
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay.
And Claudia might be familiar with it. She lives in Truckee as well. There's the same idea coming out of Tiger and Truckee, and they've posted signs all along their private road for which they can, they don't, the signs don't have to meet a code. They can be blunt to the drivers, "Don't drive here." And, yeah, that's something that's worked well in Truckee at our other facility.
Okay. Man, I, I don't see us mandating something like that, but the repercussions for what occurs, if, if you're found in violation of, then your S U P is gone and your business is shut down.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so long, thank you.
So, um, we do, I do want to mention one other thing, that our Truckee facility, you actually have to drive through our property. It's 130 acres, and the property's on both sides of the former highway. So residents that live there drive literally through the center of the facility.
Okay. But that's a different facility.
It's a different one, but I was going to.
And I'm just discussing this one.
I was going to tell you, so we actually do discounts for neighbors. So the people that live past our site, we have, we do snow removal for them. Most of them don't have paved driveways. We sell discounted drain rock, road base, grindings to them.
Great, thank you.
We've had a good relationship with other neighbors.
Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno.
We should.
Sorry about that. These are all NDOT rightaways. I just want to at least be on the record about this Reno-Tahoe link. Is there an actual path there, is that a proposed? Do you know what's going on with that bike route? Because there was a concern brought up about it.
Well, the bike route has recently been designated to use Quillisie Ranch Road. I just had that out. I wish I would have asked that in about two seconds.
Mr. Gallagher, if you could repeat what you said into the microphone.
I'm not saying anything that makes any sense right now, anyway. We, we did contact the, the Bike Path people and Janet, the president of the. Colin, give me your copy. This is what we received from, from Janet. She's been, she's been on the site. She's met with Mr. Kautz. She's the president of the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Way, and she doesn't see any problem with it.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead. Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you. Vern, I have a quick question for you. The memo that we got, again, the revised, on the conditions, said hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The applicant has since stated that they would agree to, or they were constraining 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. with 24 hours a day, and then the other circumstances. What is staff's opinion on that now? I think it's Condition 6, right?
Well, I had my notes on it too, so I need to just.
Condition 6.
Yeah, I know, I just need to find it in this pile of stuff. Because as you were all speaking, I was writing stuff on the conditions so that when this came up, I could answer the question.
That's what I'm asking you.
Well, I'll give it a shot. The crusher oper, well, what they were looking for was 7:00 to 7:00 for the crusher operations, and then I believe he said 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., which is 24 hours, for the limited public use sorts of operations. Based on the sound study and what they expect to do, we believe it's reasonable. So the crusher oper, and it, five days a week, I would assume that would be Monday through Friday, not any five days per week, but Monday through Friday, so people would have an expectation of what that would be. So basically, it would be the crusher operations, the way I heard it, shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And where's the other? I just wish I had my.
I think it was 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 24 hours a day, only during emergencies and supporting public works projects that are constrained under contract for hours of operation.
So basically, in the, the yellow version I gave you, it would, it would be the, the first sentence modified, and the rest, that's all struck through, would be deleted. So it would be the crusher operations would operate through those hours, and then from 24 hours only during the emergency work projects that are constrained under contract for hours of operation. So that's, the condition would just be that one sentence.
And you're okay with that? Because the email that we got before from you said that you guys were okay with everything except for Condition Revised and Condition 6. So your staff is okay with that, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Do you have a, I was going to follow up with one question on the sound stuff, unless you've got one. Go ahead. Vern, could you just tell us really quickly two things? First of all, do you all remember Singer Social Club? And do you remember that sound study, which was like two sentences without a logo? And I don't know if you noticed the sound study in this, but this is a sound study. Remember, we were like, what's a real sound study look like? This is that. I just was thinking about that when I was reading it. I appreciated that. Vern, the sound study, that, for the crusher operations, what does it indicate at where the residential property is? For just the crusher operations that we're talking about, that they're asking to go from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. instead of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Okay, the, um, the, up to the orange colors in here, that's in the 55-plus range. In the green area, it's 50. The residential properties, it, these aren't residential.
This is for the crusher, not, this is for the crusher, not the.
Well, this, this analyzes the crusher, the whole operation. This is where the crusher is, and this is where the aggregate area is.
Thank you.
So the scale is here, the crusher is here, and the stockpile area is here. Too bad, this is not. The residential property that triggered the three, within 300 feet, is over here in this area, and the nearest house is right here, which is over 500 feet from the property.
The green indicates.
The green is 50, 50 to 55.
And, and what's the, what is it at resident, at property lines?
65 during the day. The ambient noise levels in the area without this operation are, during the day, 61 to 64, something like that.
From the trains?
Well, no, not, the trains are 85 to 100 when they go by. So, so this is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't mean to cut you off. I got, I appreciate that. Vice Chair Wieske?
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, and you may, you may want to pass this one off to Mr. Kautz, that's fine. I'm going to ask you, because of runoff from the site, how is runoff of the site going to be maintained and, and controlled to keep it from going west towards the river or the flume?
There is, and the, the site plan indicates there's a detention basin there. Everything, all the stormwater that falls on the site will be contained on the site.
Okay.
There's berm, there's already a berm along most of the site, and the other stuff will be channeled into the detention facility, which is on the northwest corner. It's right up next to, right up next to Crystal Park Road. Right there.
Okay.
Everything will be channeled into that.
Very good. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Commissioner Woosley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Vern. So we're just getting on the subject of, of the interaction, the sites and its interaction with the, the nearby canals and the steamboat ditch. Further reading on, it seems like there's been some interaction with Tamaas as well as, you know. Actually, I just wanted to ask you to further clarify the, the impact this, this project will have on both the Verdi Canal and the steamboat ditch.
I believe the steamboat ditch is up the hill.
Or I'm sorry, is it the steamboat canal?
Well, the only canal, this.
That's the Truckee River.
There, there's the Truckee River here, and then there's the Hydro Canal, which basically that water is used for the hydroelectric plant up or downstream. Our discussions with Tamaas, I believe there's information in the staff report about that, that they didn't see any adverse impact on their ditch, and also would be a benefit to them, actually to both parties, because they can use the ditch for emergency fire, access emergency water for fires, and they will be providing access to the ditch for Tamaas to work in the ditch through their property. So Tamaas was, I don't know if anyone from Tamaas is here, they indicated they were going to try to be here, and also from N D E P. But they indicated they didn't have any concerns with this, and it shouldn't have any adverse impact on their, on their ditch.
I think we do have a, one person from Tamaas.
Good.
If we don't.
Do we have someone here from Tamaas? Thank you. Please come up and state your name. And it sounds like we have a question for you.
Good evening. Levi Clyver, Supervisor of Lands for Truckee Meadows Water Authority.
Could you go over the impact, and also just any agreements you have going on with this, with the potential project?
Sure. We don't see a negative impact to the river or the canal. We do have a deal with Mr. Katz to allow to put a, a dry hydrant in to get water out of the canal in emergency fire needs only.
Gotcha. Was there any other discussions with the potential? It sounds like there's some contaminated soils on the property. I'm not sure if that would be appropriate for Tamaas or Vern.
Is there someone here from N D E P?
Yeah. Oh, fantastic.
I guess that's probably a question for you. If you could come up and state your name for the record. Thank you.
Allison Oakley with the Bureau of Corrective Actions at N D E P.
So my question was, with the contaminated soil, was there any worry about with the canal being very close to the project and the, with the river?
No, the contamination is very low-level petroleum hydrocarbon contamination soil only, and at levels that wouldn't leach into groundwater or into the canal.
Perfect, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
I, I do have a follow-up question for you, since you're up there. For this use, are there, is there any permit that N D E P is requiring because it is so close to the river as well as the ditch?
No, there isn't a permit that we require because of the ditch, and my bureau doesn't do permitting. So I can't speak to that, but for the contaminated soils, no permit, just a soil management plan for that. So if they do actually move any of the contaminated soils, we will be overseeing that through a management plan, so we know how that will be handled.
And they're required to do that with you, in partnership with you, if they disturb those soils?
Yes, yes. And prior to any disturbing of the soils, we'd need a management plan.
So the river, under, I'm guessing Clean Water Act, the, you know, any impacts from this use? I don't know how that usually works. Is that your department?
You mean, no, it isn't my department. And nobody else from N D E P is here.
Because it would be someone from N D E P, right?
Yes, it would probably be. I don't think we have any kind of regulation like that, but it probably would be safe drinking water, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Does anybody have any follow-up questions for N D E P while we've got her up here? Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, other questions?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno.
Yes, Commissioner Reno.
Vern, really quick, on this language for Condition Number 6, because everything's crossed out, it sounds like, well, we're going to change it from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that's proposed. And then from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., 24 hours, only during emergencies and supporting public works projects. Couple of questions there. You took out the language Monday through Friday, so it sounds like it can now go seven days a week. Is that correct? Is that correct?
As I indicated, I said it was 7:00 AM to 7:00, 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Oh, sorry, I didn't get that. Monday through Friday, okay. And then, next question is, what this, this public works projects that are constrained under contract, maybe give me an example, and obviously, we have a shorter construction season, and so I suppose during the whole construction season, you may have a situation where that's running 24/7 for I-80 or, or any kind of public works project. And that also begs a question on this, this development in Verde, where you might have truck traffic going through it. Are those roads considered public works projects for that development, too? So, if they were to deliver recycled aggregate or so forth? Okay, a couple of questions, yeah.
I'm not tracking with you on the last part of that question. The roads that the trucks are using, are those public works projects?
Yeah, there's a 350-home subdivision in Verde, where, where obviously, they'll probably be supplying material to them.
Well, if they're under contract to remove stuff in a very short time period, that's really what this is, you know, geared towards. Like, they're taking out a mile's worth of I-80 overnight, and they have a contract to remove that during that time period. That, that's what that's intended for, not just to operate 24 hours a day, any old, any time. That, that's, it's either a contract for a public works project, or some other large project that's under a, you know, limited times constraint to get the materials removed.
Okay.
So, the West Meadows project...
Yeah, the West Meadows project, is what I'm talking about.
That would not qualify for it.
That would not qualify for it?
No, because that...
It's a private property, it's a private development. Any improvements along Highway 40 Wood, though, for that development, I would assume, because that's improvement on public properties? If they were to widen it...
If they came in and was rebuilding 40, then yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't want to have a situation where you have this during the construction season, always being, operating 24/7, and then the neighbors. And then, on that note, for the sound study, I live up in the northwest, I hear the trains in the middle of the night, I hear them blowing their horns in the middle of the night, and I'm pretty far away from it. But, you'll have dozers, you'll have heavy equipment, sorry, heavy equipment all over, and the backup noise that happens, the beeping that happens, will that occur in the night? I don't know if that can be addressed, or was that in the sound study when they were considering the noise that's coming from the site?
The, and the applicant can probably answer some of that, too. The, the noise study took into account the noise generated by the, by the equipment, which included the beepers.
It did, okay.
And again, the idea is to be operating this thing Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00, not at all hours of the day and night, at any time at their whim.
Well, no, I understand that, but it's during special emergencies.
But again, the, the beepers are required to be on the trucks and the heavy equipment for backing up.
No, I'm not saying to eliminate it, I just want to make sure that that's been considered in the noise study.
I believe that it was in, in the noise study, because they did, they did a sound study at the existing operation, and then they modeled this one based on that exact same equipment that they're gonna use at this place.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levi, just to follow on that, and you may, somebody may have said this already, but the hours that are limited, it just says the crusher operation, so deliveries, loading, all that could be 24 hours, is that accurate or not? What are the other limits? Where are those in here?
I'll jump in, it would be 6:00 to 11:00.
6:00 to 11:00.
For regular business hours.
Loading, unloading, moving stockpile, stuff like that would be 6:00 to 11:00.
That's the way it's written, that's how it is.
6:00 AM to 11:00.
Wait, I thought we were changing that to 7:00 to 7:00.
But it...
The way it's written, it says the crusher operations would be 7:00 to 7:00. Regular business, if they're not operating the crusher, would be if, if somebody's coming in and picking up a load of aggregate, or whatever they're doing, that that could happen between 6:00 and 11:00.
And where's that written? Is that a...
Yeah, that's not in here, is that why?
Well, what we could do is, we could just, if you go down to the second struck-out sentence, it says, "The remainder of the project operations," and it lists them, "will normally operate between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Limited operations may operate outside, you know, between 6:00 to 11:00. Under special circumstances, such as delivery of materials," we could, we could just add that timing into that last condition, because it, it describes the other operations, truck deliveries of raw materials, stockpile management, and truck pickups of processed materials. That kind of covers the rest of the operations, so...
Commissioner Levi, that's a good catch.
That could be clarified to be 6:00 to 11:00 on those.
Sounds like if you just remove the strike-through for that sentence, right? So, the remainder of project operations to 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, if you just remove the strike-through and re-include that, you're good on the remainder of the operations, making sure that those are limited to daytime. And that the limited truck operations is addressed. That last sentence that was taken out, is that addressed?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wysocki, I, I agree with you. If you put that sentence back in there, then that takes care of the remainder of the operation of loading and offloading of materials, or, or starting trucks up and warming them, and, and getting ready to move them out.
And then that, and then that last sentence, is that covered by the rewording that the applicant suggested in the underlined sentence, the second sentence there? So, the applicant suggested, "Only during emergencies when supporting public works projects," et cetera, but that was to replace limited truck operations? So, that's different wording. Does that get us the same thing? Or do we want...
Yeah, they need that in there, because they need to be able to load and haul trucks in and out of there when they're running 24/7s due to an emergency or a public works project.
Right, but that last sentence that was struck through sort of said that same thing in a different way? Do we want to say it with that last sentence, or...
Actually, that, I mean, the crusher doesn't necessarily need, and I don't want to get into the intentions of staff and applicant, but the crusher doesn't need to operate 24, even under those particular situations, as long as the haul-off and haul-in can. So, I don't, maybe if you guys could clarify the desires, that might be...
I think we're clear on the crusher part, that we want that limited, right? If every, I don't know if everyone's in agreement, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, I would say maybe 5:00 or 6:00, but depends on what's the pleasure of the commission regarding the crusher. And then, we're talking about regular operations, which is that sentence we're gonna remove the strike-through on, the remainder of project's operations. And then, we've got the third piece, which is the emergency 24-hour operations.
So, the, where it's, the sentence that starts with, "The remainder of the project operations," and that describes all those things, "will normally operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, period."
You want it 7:00, not 5:00?
Because the crusher is allowed to operate there, and the crusher is probably potentially more impactive than that. And then, limited truck operations may occur outside the normal days and hours of operation under special circumstances, such as, the only thing I can see in there is, outside of the normal days and hours of operations, if you want to put a time period in that, or if you want to say 24 hours under that, similar to what's in the first sentence, as far as the 24 hours during special circumstances.
I think what's in that sentence, the 24 hours only during emergencies when supporting public works projects, covers us and says what that last sentence said. Is everyone on the same page?
Can't we just have all the crusher and all their operations from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and 24 hours as needed? Or what emergency situation?
Yeah, I think that's where we're at, and we're just wondering, the way they phrase it, 24 hours only during emergencies.
Commissioner Wysocki, so why don't you change it to say, the crush, the first sentence, the crusher operations and all trucking?
Just the operations?
The, the business operations, then. And, and then you've got your times, you've got your days, you've got your emergency, your public works, it's all covered. The business operations shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, or, or shall be limited to between the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, 24 hours, only during emergencies and when supporting public works projects that are constrained under contact, under contract for hours of operation. There, you're covered on everything.
Except that there's gonna be a mechanic shop here, too, and maybe that's not all their intention, to shut down at 7:00. They might want to run that later, but kind of picking this apart.
That's what they're getting, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
I'm comfortable with what Commissioner Wysocki said, 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM on all business operations, except for in emergency situations supporting public works projects.
I think, Tom Gallagher, I think for working on equipment in a shop in a community commercial zone, we're allowed to do it from 6:00 to 11:00, just under code. I'm not saying that, you're not gonna be making a lot of noise inside a shop repairing a piece of equipment. I don't think that's, I, I think the intention of the, I mean, we got the zoning, and we're going, you know, we're, we're not trying to push the 6:00 to 11:00 on the, which is allowable under the zoning, it's allowable under the sound study, it's allowable under everything, but, I mean, for the office and the shop, that seems a little overboard to limit them to having to be off-site at 7:00 o'clock. I, you know, a lot of the equipment repair will take place at night.
Commissioner Kaufman?
I have to agree with Mr. Gallagher. I think that's, you know, if they have equipment, and a lot of times, only haven't worked in that, in a similar type business, a lot of repairs are done after hours, and they're not, it's not like it's, it's noisy. Again, most of it would probably be inside, number one. Number two, they won't be making noise, but, you know...
Well, if, if they are doing vehicle repairs, required to be inside.
Sorry. So, I...
So, the suggestion is perhaps to add one more caveat that says, 6:00 to 11:00 for vehicle repair and office operations inside only.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reno, what if we just add, "The crusher and trucking operations shall be limited," and then leave everything else alone?
And stockpiling.
And stockpiling. I mean, you could say those three things in the first sentence, and then that just means by zoning, they can do everything else that they have a right to do.
Well, we still need the 24-hour caveat in there for emergency public works.
Yeah, I mean, have that whole, that whole thing, but I'd say, change those few items where it says crusher, add crusher, stockpiling, and trucking operations.
Boy, I wish we had a computer on the overhead where this language, we could see.
Yeah, Commissioner, but the only thing is, if you, if you say specifically trucking, then they can't move a truck that they have parked on the site to repair. I mean, they, they have to be able to, to move that, that truck, you know?
Well, they gotta have the truck inside if they're gonna repair it at 2:00 in the morning.
Well, if it's available till 11:00 o'clock, you know, by code, again, you know, I, I think we're trying to limit that too much for him, and again, with the special use permit. And again, I've just been in that operation.
Can I make another stab at this for you folks? I was gonna take a portion of that third sentence and just put, "Project operations, including truck deliveries of raw materials, stockpile management, and truck pickups of processed materials, and crusher operations shall be limited to the hours of 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday," and then, you know, the 24-hour stuff that we already have in there, and "all other office and repair operations can operate between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM."
If they're indoors?
Well, they have to, the vehicle repair is required by code to be, that's why they're building the buildings, is to put the vehicles in, inside, but they're also required to do vehicle repair inside the building. So, we can take a portion of that third sentence and move it up to the front, so it, it identifies the truck and stockpile management and crusher operations as the main things we want to limit, and then the other accessory things, like office operations and vehicle repair, can operate between 6:00 and 11:00. Does that...
Did what Vern say make sense? If not, let's break for 5:00 and have them write it up, so we can actually look at it.
Does that achieve the applicant's goals, too?
Okay, we're gonna take 5 minutes.
Yes, when I think of trucking, I don't...
Okay, I'm just gonna read it to you, because, because it's in pieces. Okay, number six, "Project operations, including truck deliveries of raw materials, stockpile management, truck pickups of processed materials, and crusher operations shall be limited to between the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 24 hours only during emergencies and when supporting public work projects are constrained under contract for hours of operation. All other uses allowed by right in the CC zone, such as office operations and vehicle repair, shall be allowed seven days a week between the, between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM." Does that work?
Everybody good with that? Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, Vern, so, the motion that we're gonna make, well, can we just eliminate number, the request here, number three? So, in other words, we don't need to make a, a motion to allow operation between 11:00 and 6:00 PM dash 24 hours?
Yes, you do, because they can, on a limited basis, operate between 11:00 and 6:00.
Okay, so how, when we make the motion, how should we word that?
Just a motion to approve the SUP to allow 24-hour operations based on the conditions.
Okay, based on conditions, all right.
Because condition number six kind of clarifies what you can and cannot do and when.
Okay.
Okay. Is any, any more discussion on the hours in this language? Okay, I have one more question that I want to, that I want to ask staff, something just we haven't touched on yet. And I remember, I think most of us were on the commission when we approved the changes to the TODs that include, included the changes to this zoning, and I remember looking at it and thinking, you know, remembering specifically, and it was only like eight months ago that this was actually changed from industrial to community commercial, am I right? And, so my question is specific to the SUP, to resume and abandon non-conforming use. Since the SUP is an entitlement that could go forward beyond this, you know, seemingly very conscientious current owner, does that enable the use on this property to be a general industrial use, or is it only a facility similar to this? So that if we were to approve this, does it approve the non-conforming use as well as the prior, like, industrial zoning?
No, it's just this use, just as described in this and with these conditions. So, they couldn't do outdoor manufacturing?
Or wrecking yard.
Or wrecking yard.
So, this SUP is specific to this with these conditions, and it doesn't enable any other industrial uses that are allowed in industrial zoning?
It's very narrowly focused to what is before you.
Right. Okay, thanks. That's the only other question I have. Does anybody else have any other questions before we have discussion or a motion? Discussion or a motion?
Commissioner Kaufman, and there'll be three motions. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions to resume and abandon non-conforming use of outdoor manufacturing, processing, assembly, and fabrication. And I can make all the findings.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Taylor, a second, I can make all the findings.
Okay, and I do just want to have discussion for a minute, because we had so much questions on this, that I just want to be clear that, for me at least, that I appreciate all the discussions. that I just want to be clear that, for me at least, that I appreciate all the discussion and answers and engagement from the commissioners and staff and the applicant. And I am specific especially to finding F of the general SUP findings that, that I can make the findings. And I think that the, the impacts that this project creates, noise and dust and things like that, will be properly mitigated with these conditions. So we didn't do much discussion, but I just wanted to put that on the record. Does anyone have any other discussion or?
Commissioner Levis, did, maybe I didn't hear you right, did you say subject to all the conditions as amended and already read into the record?
No, we'll, we'll go down. There's three different motions here.
Yeah, that's not pertinent to all, okay.
That first motion does not include the conditions?
Doesn't include the condition six, revised condition six.
And actually, could I make?
Hours.
It does.
One more comment on your motion. This is going to be a recommendation to city council because they will have the final vote on this. So you're moving to recommend approval.
So all three of these?
Yes, all of this has to go to city council.
Wait, and Vern, does he have to then include the conditions on this motion?
I would because the condition is really relevant to the non-conforming use that we're, that you're considering re-establishing. So yes, I would say that is definitely relevant.
Put the conditions with all of them, each of the motions and each will be a recommendation to city council.
Yeah, the conditions should go with each one of the SUPs.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner Kaufman.
Okay, with the revised conditions.
Are you amending your motion? Do you accept?
Commissioner Taylor, a second. I can make all the findings.
You want me to redo the whole motion?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
I think everyone understands the motion, correct?
Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special re, use permits subject to conditions to resume and abandon non-conforming use of outdoor manufacturing, process, assembly and fabrications with the revised conditions as submitted.
Condition number six.
And I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Taylor, a second, I can make all the findings.
Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously, next motion.
LDC 15 dash zero 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 one six. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the revised conditions to allow a non-residential development to be located within 300 feet of a residentially zoned property. And I can make all the findings.
And that was a recommendation to city council?
And recommendation to the city council.
Everybody clear on the motion?
Commissioner Taylor, a second, I can make all the findings.
Any discussion on that motion? Everybody clear on the motion?
Madam Chair, I'm a little confused here, not on the motion itself, but do we really need to be doing three separate motions? Or can you compile them together and say, and move it on to the city council?
For the record, John Shipman, Deputy City Attorney. I think you can do it both ways. I'm a little curious why this is a recommendation and not a, a straight approval.
Under the non-conforming section of Title 18, to resume a previously abandoned non-conforming use is a review by planning commission with approval by city council.
Okay. But the other two permits couldn't, they could be approved without going to city council, correct?
Vern, sorry for the confusion on the motion, folks.
I think they're tied together.
Okay.
Vern?
Yeah, the other two can't go without the first.
It's a package, the other ones aren't any good without the first one.
Okay.
I'm prepared to call for a vote on the second motion upon which everyone is clear. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. One more motion.
LDC 15 dash oh oh one six. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the revised conditions recommended to city council for approval to allow the use to operate between the hours of 11 PM and six AM or 24 hours. And I can make all the findings.
Did you add specific subject to amended conditions?
I said, based, at the beginning, I said, on the revised conditions.
Everyone clear on the motion? Do I have a second?
Commissioner Taylor, a second, I can make the findings.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you for your project, thanks to everyone who came out, thank you for your time and your input. Should I read the appeal? Wait. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, SUP variance or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must, must make his or her own appeal, appeals must be filed. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing. Folks, any discussion, please take outside, we, we still are in a meeting, thank you. Again, I was reading the appeal process, appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission recommendation.
And just clarification, this one will go to council anyway, but you can still appeal it, which will get it to an evening hearing.
City clerk. All right, next item on the agenda is Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report, number seven, item seven.
We have a meeting coming up next week, I believe it is, Wednesday. We will need a replacement for Commissioner Stapleton.
Paul Levis is your alternate and he has agreed to attend that meeting.
Okay, so hopefully all three of us will be there. Do we need to put on the next agenda a recommendation to city council for an alternate?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Any other updates?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, next item, number eight, staff announcements.
Okay, I have a few here. City council did approve the amendment to, between, for the boundary between UNRC and the DRCRC that you saw a couple of weeks ago, that was approved by city council and it's on its way to regional. We do, oh, we'll come back to that one. To keep you posted on the Newlands neighborhood, we have received the grant this year to conduct the architectural survey for the Newlands neighborhood. We did not receive the Wells grant for this year. They, they wanted us to do one at a time due to staff limitations. So they said, once we get through the Newlands, then we will revisit the Wells. The context came back positive on the Wells to go, to move forward at a later date. So we will be going out shortly to get a contract for assistance on completing the architectural survey for the Newlands neighborhood plan. A portion of it was already completed by Shippo for us. The, Commissioner Nowitzki already mentioned that we will have a regional alternate on the next agenda to decide that. We'll also have revisit officers for the planning commission on our next agenda since we will need, I guess, a new official chairman and vice chair.
Why, yeah.
Because you would become chair and then we would need a vice chair.
Sorry.
Unless you promise never to miss a meeting, never to be sick. And thank you to Michelle for, and Jamie.
What if we don't want him as vice, what if we don't want him as chair?
You have that, you have that, well, that's why I'm putting it back on the agenda.
He could be both, I think he could do it. He'd be like talking to himself.
And thank you to Michelle and Jamie in the city manager's office for getting the planning commission packet on to the MinuteTrack system. We've been trying to do that for quite some time now. Actually, we're supposed to be on there before city council, but our packets are so big and beautiful that they kept crashing the system. So city councils was easier to deal with and they did theirs first, and now we are friendly on there, thanks to Jamie and Michelle. That one. Yes. And right now, we tentatively have December 4th and 11th reserved for planning commission meetings. We have fourteen, fifteen cases, since one was continued tonight, so we'll have fifteen cases. And there's been discussion on whether to put it all on the 4th and bring your sleeping bags or split them up and put some on the 4th and some on the 11th. So we are open to comments on that if you prefer one way or the other.
Commissioner Nowitzki, I, we just saw six tonight, it's a quarter to 10. We don't know what we're looking at for next month, but we saw how many people were here for Palisades. That's going to take a lot longer next month on the 4th. Except the horse won't be here. And so I could only imagine that it'll take a little bit longer, so I'm ready to have two meetings and have staff split it.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Reno, I agree. I don't think we can do 15 cases in one night.
Okay, we will split those up and assign two different, 4th and 11th. So we've already asked to confirmation on those, so we're assuming everybody can make both of those meetings, other than Dagney. And, yeah, so you'll have about seven on each one, seven or eight on each one. And that's all I have on updates. And just a thank you from staff to Dagney for serving on the planning commission. You've been a fantastic detail-oriented planning commissioner and I think have done a great job as chairman. So thank you very much for your time on the planning commission.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you to staff, I love the page numbers.
Those are for you.
They're for everyone.
Dagney, you'll probably want to just come and listen at Palisades.
Well, if I show up, then you'll know. But I might, yeah. I'll be rooting for you guys. Next item on the agenda, suggestions for future agenda items? Seeing none?
Commissioner Nowitzki. I, I just want to, I know that Claudia mentioned the new staff reports. Change is hard for a lot of people, but this is a really great staff report and a great format. And whatever it took to get here, thank you, because tonight proved itself. When we needed to reference page numbers or parts of a document, it was so much easier to do it. I, I think it's awesome to staff, thank you, everybody who is involved.
Wait, no, no, okay, that was public, okay. Any public comment? I want to say thanks again, you guys, for all your nice comments tonight, I didn't expect that, I appreciate it. It's been great working with you.
Thank you very much.
And good luck. Any other public comment, any public comment? Okay, I'll take a motion for a German. Okay, aye. All in favor?